Okay, you're live.
All right, welcome to June 1st, everybody. I'm Lauren Barnes. I'm the soon-to-not-be-chair of the Milis Select Board, and I'm very pleased to welcome everybody to our latest in our online community meetings for the Select Board. I'd like to introduce and acknowledge and thank my colleagues, James McCaffrey and Peter Germain, who serve with me, our town administrator, Michael Gazinski, and our operations director, Karen Bray. We have an important agenda, not a long one, but a substantive one nonetheless. And I'm going to start first by introducing Chief Rick Barrett and our board of health director, John McVay, who are going to provide us with a COVID-19 community update. Thank you, John.
I don't know, Chief, you want me to go first?
Sure, go ahead, John.
This is John with the Health Department. Things are kind of quieting down, and I would imagine we've seen less hospitalizations, less cases in Milis. I'll have Kathy, who's online here, speak to the exact numbers, because the nursing, public health nursing is tracking that through the may... So currently, I guess, in Massachusetts, there's probably like 96,000 cases, from what I gather. Unfortunately, 6,000 fatalities. But we're seeing a downward trend in the hospitalizations, which is key to the metrics for the phases and the openings. So that's a good sign. If it continues to stay on a downward trend, we should be okay for the slated phase reopening, one through four, without any delays. But again, that's assuming that that trend stays. I'm sure we'll get some flips here and there, but you know, how they determine what's epidemiologically significant, that's up to the state to determine how they will determine it. Again, if something is significant enough to pull a phase back or extend it further. We're looking forward, I guess, to reopening most businesses as soon as possible, safely, obviously. Because I think a lot of businesses really definitely want to start to see things go back to somewhat normal. But that's what I have. I don't know, Chief Barrett, Kathy.
So I'll just add that I would agree with what John said. We're on a downward trend. Things are starting to open, people are coming out. We're starting to see things go back to normal. Calls are increasing, non-COVID-related calls. And you know, people are really starting to follow the rules. So we see a lot of people out and about, and I think things are starting to look in the right direction. Like John said, the numbers are definitely dropping. We're seeing less and less, and that's a good thing. So we'll keep our heads up and hope for it through this soon.
For any other discussion points with respect to COVID-19, we're going to get into specifics on business reopenings in a minute. Just wanted to know if there was anybody else with anything to add to that. I want to announce, simply because they're a beloved institution in the community, that Tangerini's Farm was a beautiful way to start the day this morning, that whether you were an employee or you were a guest, everybody was very respectful, socially distanced, everybody wore masks. That is, in fact, the policy of the farm. And they have a really nice menu offering, and you can do a lot of your transacting of your business online and pre-order. So if you're looking to lift your spirits, I would highly recommend a visit to Tangerini's. Anything else? I'm going to move on then to invite our town administrator, and Carol Johnston, to discuss the Milis filing for a COVID-19 response grant under the CARES Act.
Madam Chair, I'll start, if that's all right. I just wanted to kind of preface the remarks from the finance director and I by stating that, as the board is aware, this grant application is due by this Friday, June 5th. The total amount available for the town of Milis And these are funds that have to be directly related to the COVID-19 costs for the community and cannot be used to substitute for lost revenue. So the finance director and I spent a great deal of time, and I can say Carol spent more time than I did, so I want to thank her for all her work on this, in reviewing the categories for which the town could apply for these funds. And really, our goal, our short-term goal, was to reach out to all the departments and to certain boards and committees to get feedback on the best way to move forward with this. So again, our goal was to put together a document in a timely fashion that had feedback from the department heads, that had reasonable estimates for reimbursement, in that we could get back into the state and federal pipeline as soon as possible. We're certainly hoping to be able to submit this by tomorrow. Having said that, these numbers in the breakdown are not set in stone. We do have some leeway on these as time moves on to be able to tweak these numbers. And the state and federal governments know that, you know, many of these numbers are estimates. So a large portion of these costs are estimates for different cost impacts that we'll have from COVID between now and December 31st. So just because there's an area that may be not specifically covered in here, or there are areas that should be tweaked slightly higher or slightly lower in some estimations, this meets the guidelines and follows the request from the department heads for this, the middle at this time. So with that, Madam Chair, with your indulgence, I'd like to just pass it over to the finance director to see if she has any comments in regards to the categories and the process we went through.
Yep, that sounds great.
Thank you, Mike. So when we, as Mike said, we reached out to the departments, and on the spreadsheet that you received in your packet on Friday, there's a listing by department, by category, and a description, as well as whether it's for an FY '20 or an FY '21 estimate, with a total for each line item. Most of the things are, everything needs to be directly related to COVID-19. It has to be for whether it's the first responder, or temporary staff, or signage, communications, for educational materials, planning and development, including IP costs for distance learning for the school. So each of the departments submitted their request, and that's what you see on this listing that's here. There were, we did adjust a few categories, increased it a little bit for the board of health and also for the fire department, knowing that the potential for somebody to be out would be of the first responder for the fire department. So there were a couple of other, and you'll see those in the categories that are listed, in the direct staffing costs, and also in the PPE lines for the board of health and the fire department. As Mike had said, these are just estimates of best guess estimates, similar to what we present for a budget. The final determination will be on when we submit these, with all of the detailed expense reports into, whether it goes into the state or into FEMA. So everything has to be extremely well documented. It has to be, without question, COVID-19-related as mitigation for the virus. Not sure if anyone has any questions on any of the information that you currently have.
I do, Carol, it's Lauren. My question was, since we're going to be in good company on some of these purchases, whether it's PPE elements or Lucite, or some of these other adaptations, my question is, is the state going to be providing some sort of a consortium buying program? And if not, can we crave one ourselves? Our fire chief, who's on the call right now, has a great degree of experience and success in doing group buying. And I know Jim McKay has done group buying for supplies, salt, things like that. So I'm just wondering if there's a way for us to push some of these costs down in order to expand our reach into other things we think we're going to need.
Well, we've thought would be, the wisest approach here for the town would be if everything were funneled through the board of health. So all of those PPE requests, if they went through the board of health, we would keep an inventory here. And then, as far as the Veterans Memorial Building, people would request to the board of health, and then Paul would be able to distribute it to the different departments. We'd be able to track it as to the usage and that. That way, we could buy it in a larger quantity. I'm not sure, there may be something to the state where we could reach out and get like a mass buying power situation, but I'm not sure on that. Maybe Rick is more well-versed in that.
So Madam Chair, most of our purchases have been working with either NEMA or FEMA. Buying from private companies has been very tough for most people. So luckily, we have a great relationship with our NEMA rep. And weekly, we're able to give updates on equipment that we need and go through them. To purchase, you know, you're looking three or four weeks out. We do have avenues to do that. We've been lucky enough to be able to supply the town hall, staff, and really anybody else who needed masks and PPE with them, using the resources that we currently have.
I just wanted you to know, Mike and Carol, that I heard back from Peter Milano from the Massachusetts Office of Business Development, and sent him, and sent to you the checklist that they have to the extent that it includes anything that's specific to economic development. So I haven't read it, I literally just got it, and I sent it to you.
Okay, thank you.
We'll take a look at that. It is my understanding that it's fairly limited at this point on the current CARES Act that could be used, but we will look at that closely also with that to see if there are any opportunities there. And if there are, we'll certainly be looking at those.
Anybody else have any other questions before we move forward? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much for doing that and for making sure that we are going to be part of the ask ahead of deadline, that's really...
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
As part of the COVID grant, we do need formal board approval to go ahead and send that request, that grant request out. So, and Carol, I believe, is the requirement for the chair to authorize it or for the clerk?
The chair has to, the forms she'll have to fill out, and that will have to be included as an upload in the submission that you enter.
Right, so if the board could approve, just authorize the chair to execute that document, we could take care of that tomorrow, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair.
That sounds fine. Mr. McCaffrey, would you like to make that motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the board approved the application for the COVID-19 grant in the amount of $729,147, and authorize the chair to execute the application documentation on behalf of the board.
Second.
So moved, I will pull the board for this decision. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. So Carol, you can just email me that document, and I can do an electronic signature on it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, great.
Madam Chair, may I just want to thank Selectman Germain and the task force for assisting with feedback on this and working together to make sure we have a complete document to send back. And we will be keeping the board informed as time goes by and as the funds are needed and how they're spent. We'll keep the board informed as far as that progress is concerned.
Excellent. And for anybody from the community who's participating, you should know that this is an all-inclusive submission and does include many departments, including the schools. So thank you very much, everybody who did help with that. I'm going to move forward to ask our director of the DPW, Mr. Jim McKay, who, when his team is not replacing stolen pottery at the beautifully manicured cemetery in advance of Memorial Day, so thank you to you and your team, has an update for the community on how to acquire transfer station permit applications and also revise summer hours.
So Karen, I'm trying to share, let me share the screen.
Do you, I have the document up, Jim, is that okay?
That's fine, yep.
So the first one I have up is the transfer station permit application, the current one for 2020 to 2021.
Okay.
If you want to speak to that first.
Sure, so this is the, are we...
We can't see it.
Sorry?
We can't see it.
No, it's not, it's not on the screen.
Oh, it's on, it's on TV, so.
Oh, my goodness.
Sorry. So then, Jim, if you want to share your screen, then we'll forget that. I can't, oh, wait a minute. Maybe if I do the screen share too here, let's try this. How about now?
Karen Bray is standing.
All right.
Perfect.
This Zoom thing, I'm starting to catch on.
So this is our new form, this is the first year we did this. We've been wanting to do it for many years. We sent out over 900 applicants, you know, to residents, different mailings. And so far today, we've received back almost 300 and something. And that's only within a week. We first posted this on the Milis Facebook page, and without even, anybody even getting it in the mail, there was, we received almost 15 to 20 responses before we even did the mailing. So we're encouraging everybody to fill this form out and mail it back and follow the regulations. Please send in a copy of your car registration. That's imperative that you do that, so we know that it's a Milis resident. The prices, we didn't go up on the prices yet. I had a meeting with the town administrator, and we decided right at this time that it's, the transfer station's efficient without the cost of the employee that's being paid out of the water. But we think that that's something we need to address further down the road with the, you know, Bernie School survey that he did on the DPW. So this is just an update on this. We're going to continue with this. And if we can, maybe someday in the very near future, start selling transfer station stickers somewhere, whether it be at the DPW, I doubt we'll sell them there because there's no separation. You know, we'll try to work something out at the town hall. But this is the way that people need to send in for their stickers, which expire on July 1st. Any questions?
I have a question, can you hear me? It's Lisa.
Yep.
We've been getting calls from some of the senior citizens who say they have no way to make the copy at home. Is there some way that if they've already had, previously had a transfer station sticker with the same car, that they can not have to send in a copy of the registration?
No, right now, we're asking for a copy of the registration, for it to be sent in, for this to work. And if we're going to continue to do it next year, which hopefully we will do it, hopefully that's the way we're going to do it, you know, forever. I mean, people send copies in when they do their dog licenses, they send in, you know, all that stuff. So they should be able to send a copy in.
Well, actually, with the dog licenses, if they've already sent it in, since it's, we don't require one every year, but...
Right, so that, we may do that next year, but you know, this year, we're asking everybody to send one in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Joyce Boyarty has a question.
She's on mute.
I'm muted, Joyce.
Joyce, you were muted.
I didn't hear you.
You were muted, try that again.
Sorry about that, I thought I unmuted myself. Jim, was this mailed out to people? Or is this available online?
Both, it was mailed out to everybody that had one last year, because we had their name and addresses. And then we, it's online, so you can download this online, yes.
Okay, good, because I don't recall receiving it, that's why I'm asking. Thank you.
And we can, of course, use the, I believe you already did, right, Jim? The town Facebook page to get the word out?
It was very successful, yes.
Excellent, good to hear, that's great. Any other questions about this convenience, so that everybody can continue to get rid of their trash? Okay, excellent, thank you very much, Mr. McKay. Now we'll be talking to you again.
There's one more.
Sorry?
You just have to do the hours for the transfer station.
Oh, I apologize.
So there we go, the board always, we instituted our summer hours, and it's, we extended on Wednesdays to 6:45. There is a cost for that of approximately $2,500 to $3,000 in overtime. And with the rates being the same, I just felt that, you know, myself and the town administrator, that, you know, the board should, you have to vote that we can expend those funds, so. Nothing's changed this year. Somewhere along the line, we're going to institute a mattress recycling program, and that will be for town-wide. You won't have to have a sticker for that. Right now, you have to have a sticker. We received a grant over the past year, and the DNP will pay for it. But we just have to, with the slowdown and stuff like with people being out different type weeks, we have to set up a spot for it, so people that don't have a transfer station sticker will have to... Somewhere, we'll put their container, and we'll charge $5 apiece for a mattress and $5 for a box spring. And again, that will be for everybody in the town, not just people that have a sticker. But that's, good.
I'm sorry, you're looking for a motion to accept summer hours for Saturday, 8 to 11, and then noon to 3:30, and then on Wednesdays, 8 to 11, and then in extended time, noon to 6:45.
That's correct.
Correct?
Second the motion.
Okay, then moved and seconded. I'll pull the board, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. So hopefully, we're all at home turning our vacation, summer vacation oases, called our backyards, into spectacular glory. So I suppose there's going to be a lot of, a lot of need to go to the transfer station. Right?
Yep.
All right, excellent, thank you. Let's see if he's still here, since I'm looking at all this...
Actually, he is not, Lauren, and I'm looking, hold on one moment. What did I save a?
So the reason that he's not here, I should have taken him out of order, that's too bad.
And I was going to say, I apologize. He has, he did have official police business to go do, so he...
Yes, he does. Our police chief, I should have taken him first. I'm so mad at myself, I didn't think about it. Police Chief Safire is working with his counterpart, Rick Barrett, and the officials from the schools to create a fantastic celebration for the stupendous class of 2020. And unfortunately, Chief Safire is actually on official police business in Boston, where he will be part of a SWAT team. So, and that's kind of an unfortunate nod to his knowledge and reputation in that area. But I'm hoping that Chief Barrett can step in and tell everybody where they can greet the community and how this will unfold with social distancing guidelines in place.
Yes, thank you. So Chief Safire has met with Principal Mulaney, and we've been working closely with him to put together this rolling rally. Thursday evening, it's going to kick off at 6 o'clock from the rear of the Clydesdale School. The school has worked with the kids to make sure that they're social distancing, they're in cars, they're not hanging out, they're not riding in the back of the car, taking all the safety precautions. We will follow this route that Safire has put together around town in a rally fashion. We're hoping that Milis residents will come out, cheer on the class of 2020, put up decorations, and really celebrate them. You know, they've been deprived of the best part of their high school career, and we really want to send them out, you know, with our congratulations and our cheer. So we'll start at 6, we'll take this route and ends back at the Milis High School. And we will, as the chair said, follow our social distancing protocol, and hopefully, the kids will get to say goodbye to their teachers before preparing for graduation later this year.
Are there any other questions? I was asked if there are any formal ceremonies or anything at the conclusion of the parade.
We're working with the school to try to give them a little bit something extra. We're going to be building a bonfire throughout the day when students can come by, throw some of their high school stuff in there, you know, maybe break-up notes from ex-boyfriends and girlfriends.
Rick, where is that going to be?
We're going to do that in the lower bowl just as we get to the parking lot. So the plan is, as we re-enter the school property, the fire will be lit, and they'll be able to drive by and, you know, see stuff that they want disappear, go up in flames, and a bonfire in honor of them.
And Madam Chair? Madam Chair, I have to say, a special congratulations to both Abby Barrett, who is Chief Barrett's daughter, who is graduating, as well as my son, William, who is graduating, and a big shout-out to them. I know Officer Paul Adams' daughter, Kayleen, is also in the class, so we have several town employees with seniors, and we're very proud.
Absolutely, and it's been great to see the signs that have started to go up, and definitely there's more to follow. So can we bring marshmallows to this bonfire, or no?
Unfortunately, it's not the bonfire that we all hope for, that we can hang out around. You know, and that's why we're hoping to have it, so that as they drive by, they're able to, you know, take in the ambiance, but proceed on, say goodbye to their teachers, and unfortunately, clear the school grounds.
Are there any other questions for Chief Barrett? Any other comments? None. When you have a screen, it's harder to see who wants to do that, so just chime in if there are any other questions. Well, this sounds like a lot of fun. The obvious question, Chief, is, is there a rain date?
So we're working with the school to try to choose one. It's really trying to work around them. They have a big challenge. They do have some students who will be leaving for military service very shortly. So they have a small window that we're trying to work with them on. So I know Mr. Mulaney is looking at, you know, a follow-up date.
Okay, excellent. Well, we'll look forward to hearing from you and congratulate Chief Safire and everybody from us. And I'm sure there'll be a lot of people waving, standing on the streets, honking and such. You guys have perfected the art of the parade, so I'm sure this will go very well. Any other questions or comments? Karen, you have an update on the memorial building blind installation project.
I certainly do, and I know Joyce Boyarty is with us tonight. And I just wanted to say that the town voted at the last spring annual town meeting to put $14,000 in a capital project towards new blinds for this Veterans Memorial Building. After what to do, they are up. And I want to say a very big thank you to Joyce Boyarty, who is not only a member of our finance committee, but a resident who cares deeply about the town. She stepped up and was able to get us a great cost for these blinds, of which we would not have been able to afford it without. $14,000 sounds like a lot of money. It's not when you have all of the windows that we have in this building. They were desperately needed. It helps those of us who work here, so we can actually see computer screens. It helps the heat, and they're wonderful. So when we are open again, hopefully, people will take a gander, and we are very happy, want to say thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you to Joyce, thank you very much.
Aw, man, thank you, I wasn't expecting this. I have to thank my husband, though, he's...
And Rick, yeah, sorry. I didn't even mention Rick. Rick came in here every day putting up the blinds and standing on crazy things in order to reach them, so it is much appreciated. And they were socially distant, and they did a great job.
Thank you so much, thank you, thank you. It was, and it was nice for us to be able to help.
I'm glad that Rick was on the afterthought now, okay?
Yeah, I feel bad, I was like, sorry. I was like, sorry. Rick is never an afterthought, right Joyce?
Never. No, I'll tell you, the first couple of weeks, you know, he and I worked together putting them up, and then after that, he went over there every day, and I also want to thank Paul Sims for his assistance.
Correct. Paul did a lot to help out as well, so we were lucky.
But no, it was, it was a nice team effort. It was nice that we were able to do something for the town during this craziness.
Yes. Yes. And it's, it's much appreciated, for sure, for those who work here and anyone who's tried to have a meeting here with our formerly torn and broken shades, so.
Well, thank you. It was our pleasure.
Thank you.
And to the community, anybody who's had to do meetings or has worked in the building, the issue of thermal heating and such is real when you're in some of these rooms, and they happen to be facing the sunshine, and you kind of can't, you can't get around that. So I think that's it for announcements. There was a hefty announcement program. Is Bob Weiss on the phone?
Bob Weiss? I have the pleasure of having Bob Weiss right next to me, socially distancing.
Excellent.
And he was having some computer issues, so I'm going to turn this. You talked about the heat in the building. This is Bob's, right up Bob's alley. Here you go, Bob.
I'm going to tee, I'm going to tee you up, Mr. Weiss. So I want the town to know that we already hear the expression, "We're the government, and we're here to help." But in the case of the town of Milis, that is, in fact, what we have been trying to do. We've had, we have a young economic development committee with a really nice cross-section of members, most if not all of whom plan to hopefully re-up. And that's a quick reminder that I will bring up again at the end, which is, we are going to be appointing committees for the ensuing year, so if you have interest and ideas to offer, we definitely have vacancies and opportunities for you to have a forum to do so.
So instead of a chef salad, they gave me a garden salad.
Can somebody, can somebody mute Kathy? There you go. Got it. She's a very healthy eater, though. Good for her. Something that was locally purchased, for the restaurant.
And clean.
So the Select Board agreed with the recommendation of the, of Bob Weiss to lead the charge of a local town-centric reopening committee, anticipating that we would, in fact, need a plan to execute at the local level, which, that which is being planned dynamically at the state level. So we actually approved this as a board before the state's reopening committee and plan were even in place. What we've been trying to do since the time the board's leadership has been proactive in working with the permanent community representative and working with our police chief and our fire chief as to any local nuances that would need to be observed, so that we can be supportive to the businesses that are really going to be in need of all of our support when they come online. And we, as customers or employees, are going to want to know that when we go to their place of business, that they are, in fact, following the basic curricues and safety protocols that we're all counting on doing. So in this respect, part of what Bob is going to report on is somewhat futuristic, because the details are very dynamic, but we just want the message to get out to the community that, that your, your local government, and specifically the Select Board, is trying to provide the tools that will allow you to have some level of autonomy once you satisfy a certain template of requirements. And at the state level, Representative Sean Dooley was our delegation sponsor of a joint House and Senate bill, which effectively pushes the power of reopening protocols down to the municipal level and specific to restaurants, looks to provide some relief from the otherwise fairly rigorous requirements of the alcohol board, the ABCC Alcohol Beverage Commission. So with that all as backdrop, I'm going to ask Mr. Weiss if he can give us an update. As best he knows it, the purpose of his report today is to help the, to say to the Select Board that we are going to, that the task force is going to be asking the Select Board to anticipate a policy for approval, which will then allow the businesses to not have to wait for intervals of Select Board meetings to go through a week-to-week approval for various dynamic activities, which may allow them to use their outdoor spaces more creatively in order to rebound economically. Mr. Weiss?
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. And, yeah, I have a memo that I did send to the board. Most of my memos usually end up with a, a motion at the end. This one did not, because it is an update, and it's a general request from the Milis business community. And yes, back on April 27th, I, I believe it was the Economic Development Committee who made the request, but regardless, the, the task force is in place. We had three members of the library staff, actually, plus some members of the Economic Development staff make phone calls to over 300 businesses that are registered in the town. And from that, within a couple of weeks, we've been able to put together this task force made up of diverse businesses. Yes?
Could I ask for just a second? I think it's great. It looks like the desert in Utah, on our screen, anyway.
Oh.
Oh.
What the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that. What is happening?
I, I'm a pawn in the game of Zoom here, Jim. Just, if you are.
We'll be able to focus all our attention on this important message.
I saw me.
I think you're still sharing your screen.
I was. Sorry about that.
There we go.
Okay.
Well, thanks. Sorry about that. See, what I'm seeing on the TV here is not what you guys are seeing, so, sorry.
Yeah, I'm seeing me on TV.
All right, here's Bob again.
Thank you. So the task force has gotten together, miraculously, due to the work of these library folks and the Economic Development Committee making, doing this outreach. They have met several times. In fact, last Thursday, representatives from the task force, as I said, it's a diverse group of businesses, restaurants and retail businesses and many others, and met with the town staff last week. I think there's really three things right now that this task force is doing. One is, it is planning events, and that was one of the reasons that the representatives met with the town staff. Two, it's providing liaison activities between the town and the business communities, because so much of what businesses do in town require approvals from the town. And it's advocating on behalf of businesses to simplify a lot of the, the town's economic reopening. It's, I mentioned, the representatives met with the town staff, with, with John McVeigh, but with also the two chiefs. As you mentioned, Madam Chair, also with our building commissioner and with the director of recreation. So the, I think what we came away with, what the, what the business community came away with was just what they needed to know, which is, we need to wait for guidelines to come from the state before the town really knows exactly what individual businesses are going to have to go through. But the businesses are aware of that, and they are in touch with the staff, and this is a good thing. They will continue to meet with the, with the town staff as guidelines and timelines come down from, from the state. Regarding advocacy, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, the, there is a number of things, and I put about a half a dozen of them into the, into my memo, where the businesses are particularly concerned that the town kind of get out ahead of what's going on, and to anticipate, for instance, the reopening regulations to ease administration for some things such as businesses that can move out to the sidewalk or out to public places. And to that end, I've been able to get in contact with the chair of the planning board and with town, with town council, who are already working on, who are already working on how to do that for zoning and permitting. They want also the town, as you mentioned, about the ABC and alcohol licensing, which may come to a more local level. So we're keeping in contact with our state reps and with our state senator to follow the legislation. They were asking if the town can contribute resources to accommodate some of the, maybe a private sector event. And again, to that end, Chris Fogarty, who's the director of the Recreation Department, came to this meeting that we had last Thursday, and there was a lot of talk about getting together, maybe working together with the private sector and the public sector to make the events that she has, one of the family events, a little bit more interesting and more successful. And I think finally, the thing that I had mentioned is just expediting certain processes. And, and John had mentioned, John McVeigh had mentioned that how, you know, instead of businesses who want to do something private and special, coming in separately to go for their, their permitting, just make it one big event and one permit that all the, all the businesses can get in on. So it's, it's a way to expedite the, the process. I will continue to provide businesses with access to information as much as I can, and what businesses want to know is, you know, a guideline comes down from the state, they want to know how the town is going to react. So I hope we, we will be able to provide a place on our website and on the town's website, on the face page, so that businesses will know, you know, just give us a call here at Town Hall, we'll be able to direct them to whoever the right, the right person is on the staff. So as I said, there's really no, no motion involved here. Businesses just need the town to, you know, they need town approval for so many of their activities and zoning and permitting and inspections. And they're not, while they're not asking to eliminate the processes, they would just like an assurance from the town that it will exercise empathy and it's committed to finding ways to expedite the processes during this temporary situation.
Does anybody have any comments or questions for Mr. Weiss? Joyce?
In that discussion, there, there, I'm sorry, I had to step away for a second, but there, we've talked about doing two separate events, one where it would be a sidewalk and one where it would be at the field. But Rick Barrett and, and Chris Safia, both chiefs, did express their concerns about crowd control, and it has been addressed, and we are going to, from what we've discussed, limit numbers of people and limit numbers of sales of tickets, so that we can do a crowd control. There was also concern about graduation, and we didn't want to step on any toes for the graduates, and that was a really good thing that Rick and Chris brought up. It is important that the class of 2020 gets to have their hurrah before all the businesses in town. So we're trying to coordinate it, so that the Recreation Department, Chrissy's gazebo affair, you know, the music that she does at the gazebos could possibly coordinate with these, this wonderful coming out of the businesses. So, but there's a big group of people, and there are a lot of companies and businesses that are trying to get their face out there. John McVeigh's done a great job guiding us, Chris Safia and Richard Barrett and John, I mean, Rob, you guys have all done a really good job of guiding us, and just need some guidance from the, or the yea or nay from the board. But there's a lot, there are a lot of people who are behind this.
Right. Thank you, John. I should mention that Joyce is part of this task force and in part of a group that met, actually, the day after. And she mentioned two kinds of events that, that are being looked at by the task force. And it was good that, before we had that, that particular meeting, that we were able to meet with the staff, because I think there's a much better understanding of the need for, well, one of the things that Joyce brought up was crowd control. And how do you do social distancing if you want to bring people out at the same time? So it won't go, we won't have an event next week, obviously, or the week after. But the events will start to take place, and as they shape up, the, the committee will get back in touch with the town to make sure everything works according to the way the guidelines dictate.
I was going to ask Chief Barrett if he wanted to add anything that would enlighten the board, and then ask my colleagues to ask any questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, so when we were talking with the group, and I thought it was a great productive meeting, you know, we want nothing more than to get Milis reopened. It's just, we have protocols we got to follow, we want to make sure we're matching what the state has. When we talked about crowd control, you know, restaurants that are going to open, and just like stores, you know, they have a certain amount that you're allowed to have. We just want to make sure that we were educated on how many people can be in the field, how many people can be on the sidewalk, how do we control those things? So those are the things we brought up. You know, we're going to work closely with this group to make sure that we can make this happen. It's just, we're following guidelines from the state right now. We don't see it necessary to reinvent the wheel. We see a lot of towns starting to come up with things that we definitely can use, but until we see some relaxation on some of the stuff, and I can tell you, we've seen it in the EMS world. They're allowing us to do things in the EMS world that 10 months ago they wouldn't. The same thing is going to happen, you know, with the social distancing. Things are going to change. We're just waiting for them to give us the guidelines. Once we get them, we'll be on board and we'll work closely with this group. Thanks.
I think the legislation that's pending, there's been some movement on it, is going to do just that. It's going to change the, the role that the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission plays in a conventional sense and relax it responsibly to do that. I, I just think it's important for the community to hear that this board supports the business community and understands that this has been a painful time, and is doing what we can do, not to get started after the fact, but to have done our homework on a parallel track, so that hopefully, when we're, when the state comes out with the guidelines that the chief referenced, we're going to be in pretty good shape to have a policy that we can quickly adapt, because of the work that, that the task force, which is independent of the town, has been doing. And in fact, I just sent some information about that, Chief. You've got an email from me on that, another round of information that relates. I think Mr. McCaffrey had a question or comment.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment that I think this is exactly the kind of collaborative, proactive collaborative spirit that we had hoped for, that the stakeholders are meeting. We understand the balance between public health, public safety, and the need for our business community to reopen. So I think that's exactly what we were hoping for, and I'm sure it's keeping the group busy and Mr. Weiss busy, and I think you probably just started to be busy, because hopefully, you know, within the next weeks or, or, well, we, I'll go with weeks, you know, we'll see some more opening up, and then we will be ready for it. So thank you all for the hard work.
Oh, thank you. And I understand June 9th is when the governor's supposed to announce the, the next phase, when the restaurants can open, although, you know, a little bit, a few of the guidelines are leaking out now, so this is a good time for us to be looking at to, at what, excuse me, at what, what ways we can expedite some of these, these openings.
Well, yeah, hopefully he'll get a little bit more advanced notice than our friends at the retail marijuana store did, but in a, the sooner the better, so that we can all adapt.
Yeah.
To call him and ask him that.
And Madam Chair? Yes, sir. And again, just to remind businesses in town and the general public, the state has a great website, the mass.gov reopening of Massachusetts has all the guidelines that everybody's going to have to follow. I mean, they already have things in place for the restaurants, just awaiting the OK from the ABCC. So the things are there for restaurants to look at and for businesses. And once either the legislation passes or the ABCC loosens up their restrictions, everything's right there for the businesses. They'll know what to do, and they'll be ready, and hopefully hit the ground running once, once this is relaxed. once this is relaxed.
Are there any other questions or comments from the community? Mr. Germaine, do you have anything you want to add specifically?
Thank you. I think they've really done a great job up to this point. There's no further comment necessary.
So the message is stay tuned and to everybody who's wondering, please do share the word through your own social media channels to do what you can to support these businesses and know that they're working hard to win you back in a safe and welcoming way. And good job, Bob, who's been doing Herculean work to kind of track down all of these various regulations as they unfold. And we, as a board, will be anticipating the next generation of thinking that hopefully will come so that we're maybe in a position to make some more formal decisions on the 15th. Is that what you wanted from us, Bob? Just fill us up? We don't have anything specific to respond to other than to say we're on board, we're excited, and thank you to the business community for driving this.
I believe that's what the business community wants to hear, so thank you.
Okay, excellent. Before I move, I just want to make a quick interim announcement as it relates to economic development. I want to thank my colleague, Mr. McCaffrey, for reminding us that commonwealth cannabis is back fully operational. But what was pretty astounding and impressive to us was the fact that despite the fact that they were closed for the last three months through the larger revenue side of their business, the adult use side. Last week, they delivered to the town of Phyllis in the zone of $79,000 toward town. That's a pretty astounding total, given the financial realities and the door under. So we just from our community and thank our community for welcoming them. I'm going to move forward now to invite our town administrator, who I think will be joined by our town clerk and our election warden, and then to be followed by a conversation with our moderator. This is, these two tandem efforts are, have to do with the upcoming election to be followed by the town meeting. And as you may know, we've been chasing the election date, pushing it out to the point of June 22nd. That's where we've landed. That's what we're committed to accomplish. And so I'm going to ask the town moderator, or the town administrator, to introduce the status of recruitment of election workers and a proposal for potential hours compression.
Thanks, Madam Chair. As you had mentioned, an advertisement went out late last week seeking election workers. A number of our regular election workers have opted not to work this election because they do fall into, many of which fall into a vulnerable population of the COVID-19. So that has brought up a couple of issues I think worthy of discussion through the board. And, you know, as you brought up, we are advertising for folks that are interested in working the election and helping us out there to fill those gaps. But also for the board to discuss the pros and cons of perhaps altering the hours of the annual town election. Generally, the hours of our annual town election are from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. This, for the most part, requires two shifts of election workers. It has been suggested that the election might be fine if it was reduced to either six or eight hours, which really require one shift of election workers. So that would reduce the need for the overall election workers. I have investigated this in a little more detail as far as the legal requirements for an election. Town council has informed me that from Mass General Law, Chapter 54, Section 64, the select board is the body that sets the hours of the annual town election. The minimum hours of an annual town election are four hours, has to be open at least four hours, and the polls must open by noon. And so, you know, it's really for discussion here tonight as to whether or not the board wants to keep the hours from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM or to reduce those to perhaps something shorter, say noon to 8:00 PM. Just to give a little more background for the board, I have been informed by the assistant town clerk that over 500 absentee ballots have been requested to date. And so we do expect, for the first time in the town's history, that we will have many more absentee ballots submitted than actually in-person ballots at the election. And that our actual number of people coming in will be much lower and perhaps in the 100, roughly 100 number for people to come in and physically vote. So again, this is really up for the board's discussion to determine your thoughts. I know the town clerk is on the line, as well as the election warden and some of the other election officials for some of the discussion. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has in regards to this.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do have a question, Mr. Kaczynski, actually a few of them. We've talked a little. Can you give us a status as to how many people have signed up? And are we getting some younger people to sign up? Because there are a number of election workers who were in, as you said, the more suspect category who prudently have chosen perhaps not to work on this election. So where are we in terms of numbers? What types of people, what age groups, if you will, are we at at this time?
So I would turn that over to either the town clerk or someone from the staff. I have not seen the applications. They haven't come to me directly, so I would turn that over to the town clerk.
I can speak to that. We've had over 50 people since Friday who have said they would be willing to work the election, who have not previously worked. About 20 of those are high school juniors and seniors, and another five are recent graduates. And then the rest are older people in their 20s and 30s and older. And I've also gotten some calls from some of the election workers who had previously said they were not comfortable coming in, who say now that they know we're going to have masks, gloves, and Plexiglas shields, they feel much more comfortable coming in. So I really feel like we have plenty of people and I just gotten another five applications this afternoon. I think we're going to have plenty of people to be able to staff the entire day. I really feel strongly that it would be better to be open more hours to avoid any kind of crowding or lines. And there probably won't be more than 10 to 15 people maximum staff in the gym, which is a very large room. And no more than three voters in each precinct at any one time. So I strongly recommend that we keep the hours that we have. Also, it's my understanding from talking to the Elections Division of the Secretary of State that they actually have to give approval for decreasing the number of hours. The selectmen at the town level can, could vote to say they want to, but then we have to get it approved by them. And theoretically, they would do what the selectmen want, but if we show that we have plenty of people to staff the entire day, they probably would not.
If I can rephrase what I've just heard, it sounds like we have more than adequate staffed personnel to handle the election for the entire period from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM that day. That the message went out late last week and we got quite a number of volunteers as a result of that, and including some additional volunteers today. So if I'm interpreting correctly what you're saying, there really is no issue for us at this time. You're telling us that you are now able to adequately staff the entire day?
That's correct.
Okay.
There, those aren't volunteers. They're being paid for training and being paid to work.
Well, they wouldn't be paid for training, but they would be paid to work. And they're volunteers in terms of they have, they are putting their name forward.
Yeah, they would be, they would be paid minimum wage. That'd be the pay rate for the people coming in.
I didn't realize they weren't paid for training. I thought they were. We had discussed that previously. So that's a big clarification. Does the election warden want to pipe in with an expert recommendation as to the hours? If we're expecting such a slow, a low in-person turnout, do we want to have the extended hours? Regular hours, I should say. You have to unmute. If you just go right to your
I got you, Chris. Hold on. Sorry, Chris, hold on. He keeps muting and unmuting. Maybe she's doing it too. Hold on, Chris. I'm having trouble getting you to unmute. It did for a minute.
Yeah.
One more try here. Bear with us.
Right click or left click?
I don't understand why it's a problem. Unmute audio.
Barrett, she's got to do it now.
Yeah, okay. Now you have to do it, Chris. Sorry. You have to unmute on your end, Chris. There you go.
Okay, there I am.
She's sorry about that.
Hopefully I'll be more intelligent this time talking to you guys. I felt like deer in headlights the last time I talked to you. Welcome to Zoom. Been on a Zoom call. You know, I never have been on a Zoom call. But now I'm a little more confident. I really, I'm still in favor of fewer hours, even though we have a full complement. I, per orders from my doctors, will only be there for limited hours. I'll be there at the beginning for an hour and at the end to do the counting of the ballots with two other people. And I'll be there for the shift change. Our wardens and clerks, we have six wardens and clerks. Five have opted out of working. And the others, wait a minute. And the others, that means that we have one warden that will be there all day long taking care of three precincts from 7:00 AM until 8 o'clock at night. That's a large burden to put on one person. Even if I were there, it would be a large burden to put just on me, having been warden for quite some time. So I know that Lisa really wants to have it from 7:00 to 8:00, but even the town clerk's office staff will be on part-time. Lisa is a candidate. She cannot come downstairs onto the voting floor unless there's an emergency. And then she would have to be accompanied by the police officer. So those are my reasons for wanting shorter hours. And maybe we could do two shifts since we have so many people. If we did 11 to 7, 12 to 8, we could do two four-hour shifts. And that would limit the exposure for the workers to the virus. So that's my recommendation.
Does our Board of Health Director have anything to weigh in on this? You probably have been looking at how other municipalities are doing elections. We're not the first.
Yeah, I mean, it's six dozen of one, half dozen of another. You know, you could say that if you start early with what day, you may have less people coming through at any given time. But I suspect, and I think Lisa can back me up with this one, that you're going to see quite a reduction in the amount of people that are going to be showing up for the election. So I'm not too sure if, you know, I think, was it a 12 to 7? Was that the other time?
Thought it was a 12 to 8.
12 to 8, yeah. That would be any, it would make anything more risky or cause more of a problem. I, you know, again, just, I think that the reduction of people that could normally see in an election is probably going to, I say that probably, is not going to affect a day that's shortened. But again, this is new territory, so I can't say with 100% sureness that a longer day, there could be less density. But I don't think you're going to see the density. And I think you can control that density at the door. And that would be my only concern is that you get too many people congregating on one air, the public health staff.
I've personally read a lot of them.
Could I speak to this too?
Please.
Fortunately, this is a space
Can I just, can we just introduce our town nurse, Kathleen Lannan?
I am the chairperson of the Board of Health.
Thank you. Sorry. Do I demote you?
No, I, no. Nurses everywhere, no. This is a space that can be really well managed. Flow can, you know, we can have people coming in one door and leaving another. There's quite a bit of distance, you know, in the hallways to the voting area. So I have no concern personally in thinking about how this can be done with using the smaller hours. I don't think, I can't see any scenario where that can't be easily managed. And since I promised that the Board of Health would try to be there to, you know, make sure that the standards are held, I, of course, would be in favor of lesser hours. Like Chris, I don't think I could do seven, you know, all those hours in a day. So that's my
This is Chris, this is Chris again. On a typical election day, the wardens and clerks, the six wardens and clerks and myself work the entire day from 7:00 AM until whenever we finish tallying the votes. So we're used to that. But as I said before, we're only, we're only going to have one out of seven wardens there. Who, and this will be her second election as a warden. So the really qualified staff that manages each of the precincts aren't going to be there. So to have it open all day long is putting a large burden on that one warden. And that's why I would like the shorter hours.
Mr. Kaczynski, do you have any findings from other municipalities with other managers or administrators with whom you've spoken?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do know of about 12 to 15 other municipalities that have shortened their hours. So it is happening in certain circumstances out there. We haven't done a full review, but I think in the, in the select board's packet, there was some information about some towns that have reduced their hours, you know, for a number of reasons, I'm sure many of which mirror what's being discussed here. But it is happening. I'm not, I was not aware, and town council did not say anything to me about any requirement to get special permission from the state to reduce the hours. It was my understanding that the board has the authority to set the hours with the only minimums that have to be four hours long and that they must open by noon.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think hearing what I'm hearing, the issue comes down not to the number of people, but it sounds like the number of wardens available is really the primary issue that we're dealing with at this time. And given that, much as my preference would be to keep as many hours as possible open to the public, I think we have to be realistic and recognize that if we have really only two people who are going to come in as qualified wardens and only one available throughout the day, we have to listen to what our, and I apologize, I don't know what the terminology is, but our chief warden has to say.
The election warden.
The election warden, whatever. So many chiefs here. But I think that has to be a primary consideration. So from that perspective, perhaps I would recommend, at least from my perspective, that we shorten the day accordingly. that we shorten the day accordingly.
Does anybody else on this call have any other comments? Karen, you may, operationally. My other colleague, Mr. McCaffrey, who I think does know the election warden somewhat.
I would have just, I would just say that I think if we were expecting the same crowds, that having it open, the regular hours would make sense because you're trying to socially distance. But since we're going to have, I highly doubt, do the numbers that you're saying of the absentee ballots, I don't see why, I think the hours makes more sense, but that's my personal opinion. I think there's just too many other things going on, and I think it would be more responsible to make sure people are exposed for less amount of time.
Joyce, we already worked it. I agree. Having worked it, I agree. I think the shorter hours is much better. So. Can I speak?
Yep.
I'm not opposed if we go to, say, 11:00 to 7:00. I don't, if we're going to have less hours, I'd just soon close earlier because there's still going to be the tallying at the end of the night. And then we don't have to stay till midnight. And it would just have to be contingent on, you know, this issue of maybe the state still gets to override you. I don't, it was my understanding from the Elections Division at Secretary of State that they would not approve decreasing the number of hours if we could get enough staff. So it's fine to go ahead and vote that. And I would be okay with something like 11:00 to 7:00. Just knowing that, I can't guarantee that that's what's actually going to happen.
I think with the state, given that we do have enough workers, we really do have enough workers to work the election if we were to have it all day long. But it's the staff that oversees it is where we're really going to have a hard time. So I think if the state knew that there was going to be one out of seven wardens there, they would grant a variance. I can't imagine that they would.
They, Chris, they did say that they would be more willing to grant a variance on the total number of workers who are there. Like instead of having two check-in and two checkout, have one check-in and one checkout. And we do have quite a few people who have worked very many elections who could probably step in because this is, step into the warden-clerk position. Because the town election is, in terms of elections in general, is a very simple one and a fairly low turnout. Although, I don't think it'll be as low as was mentioned earlier. I think a lot of people are home now and have actually become more interested in the election than might have if they were still at work. So it's possible that the increase in number of absentee ballots will translate into an increase in the number of in-person people also. We just don't know in this, this is a new thing going on.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask for a clarification from the town administrator in terms of, certainly we've had an opinion from council that it's up to the Board to decide terms. But I'm concerned about the deadline for publishing the election warrant. Aren't we facing a, this is it, we got to decide?
That's correct. I mean, I'm checking with town council right now to see if we can get a confirmation. I'd recommend that if the Board is leaning towards the shorter timeframe, that that's what you go with. And that we'll get confirmation within the next day or two as to whether or not we need the state approval. And if they were to deny it, it would have to revert back to the 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. I'm sure we could get that confirmation within the next couple of days. I could care a day within, by tomorrow morning, but we could get the answer from the state within a couple of days.
I just looked online and Wellesley's municipal elections are 8:00 to noon on a Saturday.
That's what I just was going to say.
Yes, and they can do that. Again, it has to open at the latest by noon. It has to be at least four hours, so they've met the minimum requirement.
All of this, all of our surrounding towns, Nutfield, Medway, Norfolk, Plainville, Milford, they have all had shorter hours.
And do we know?
I don't see how the state would deny it, especially in the situation we have. So again, I would recommend that, you know, we'll follow up to make sure that, you know, we cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. But again, I would recommend that if the Board, based on the discussion here this evening, is leaning towards the shorter hours, that's what I'd recommend the Board to do this evening. And we can get all the confirmations in a very short period of time.
I would be interested to know if the election warden would be recommending an eight-hour run, a more truncated run. And would you recommend, if you were doing eight hours, would you do 12:00 to 8:00? Or would you recommend 11:00 to 7:00?
I agree with Lisa. Yeah, I agree with Lisa that 11:00 to 7:00 is better. And instead of doing one shift, since we do have enough people now, we can do two four-hour shifts. That eliminates having to feed the workers. They'll be able to have their own meals at home. So we take that out of the planning. So I would go for 11:00 to 7:00.
Joyce, anything new that hasn't been said already so I can keep us moving forward?
I just have a question to Lisa as to why she feels it's important for us to be open as long as she's proposing. Because it seems to me that the shorter hours would be better for everybody. I don't understand. I can respond. I can do, okay. It's just that that's the hours that we've always had elections open. That's what people are used to. A lot of people who come first thing in the morning, and there's other people who come later in the evening, and they're, you know, I would hate to have people coming at 8:00 in the morning and finding the town hall closed. And it's very difficult for us to get the message out to everyone. We're, you know, we don't have a local paper. The, oh, sorry. We don't have a local paper, the, you know, we don't have a way to email everyone. We don't, I guess we could do the 911. What do they call that? Phone blast to everyone to update them on what hours are. Again, I'm okay with eight hours. I really think we're asking for trouble to go to four.
Well, there's also the marquee on the front of Memorial Building. Maybe we can post something there.
And little town sound signs around town.
Yeah, I know. I actually gave, I sent a list to some complement of people who are involved in this with a list of media. It seems to me that that's one of the reasons why the town added a Facebook page. And we've just heard that it was very effective pretty quickly in recruiting the new workers that you have that come from new demographics. So it seems to me that we can, and it's our responsibility, you know, to get the word out. And probably the town clerk's office lead to do so. And I've seen signs indicating that the election is coming, so they probably can be modified. I would, I feel comfortable with the recommendation of the revised hours. I don't think they're going to cause us any hardship. And it sounds like there's more to be gained operationally and from a health safety standpoint for doing that. And if one of my colleagues wants to, I'm happy to make that as a motion to recommend. Yep.
I just wanted to confirm that I just received word back from town council, and we do not need permission from the Secretary of State's office in order to change those hours. As long as we meet the minimum four hours and open the polls by noon.
To Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
That we, unless my colleague, Mr. McCaffrey, would prefer to do so.
That's fine.
Okay. That we move, that we recommend that the hours be from 11:00 to 7:00 as reduced hours to meet the requirements of the staff that are available on June 22nd, I believe.
A second, and I will pull the Board for their response. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes, Madam Chair. As might be clear to folks, they do have potential conflict here. But as long as everyone is aware of the fact that I have a deep relationship with the election warden, I vote yes.
You're welcome to abstain if you would prefer.
I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Germaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. So there we have it. To the community of Milis. It's very easy. The staff of the town clerk's office has been terrific in turning around your mail-in ballots. All you have to do is send an email, townclerk@milisma.gov. And in response, you will receive your own personal envelope. It is not confined with your spouses or any other member of your family. And it's very easy to return it either by mail or bringing it to the bin. And as I was explaining, none of the ballots themselves are opened until Election Day. So they are sealed, protected, locked away, and then they are tallied on that day. Is that accurate, Lisa?
Yes, that's correct.
Excellent. All right, good. Well, I want to thank the town clerk and our election warden for their time and for their expertise and for taking the election forward. It's a really important time for the town. And we want to thank everybody from the town who has, who wants to have a voice. I think we have, how many registered voters? Close to 5,000? Isn't that correct?
6,500.
So 6,500, and so far, 500 ballots have been requested. So the 6,000 people out there, probably at home, who could be voting. So we look forward to receiving your ballots. Thank you very, very much. And I'm going to move on now to Agenda Item 20113. This is the discussion about how to proceed with the town meeting warrant. Specifically, the Select Board approved a preliminary menu of town meeting articles that are individual decisions for the electorate to weigh in on policy and our budget decisions. And subsequent to that, our town moderator, who is on this call, Erin Underhill, has put together some alternative proposals in the interest of truncating the actual time that might be involved in discussing more complex, maybe bylaw-type articles or more complicated funding articles. And so I'm going to turn this over to the town administrator and our moderator. And I want to note that Wayne Clacco from the ESBC is also on the line. And I believe he may want to weigh in on one of the articles himself. You have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you had mentioned, I probably want to take this item into two pieces. Again, in your packet that the Board has received is a draft annual town meeting warrant, which includes all the articles that have been submitted to date for your review and consideration this evening. Also in your packet is an altered draft annual town meeting warrant as proposed by the town moderator for the Board's consideration based on some of the concerns for making sure we have a town meeting that does not go on too long and create any unnecessary issues. So with that, I'd like to take up two articles in the original.
Can I just interrupt for one second, Mr. Kaczynski, to ask if Karen, can you pop these documents up so that we can rule between them? Since it's hard to talk about something that's 27 articles long and not actually have the visual in front of us.
Madam Chair, Ms. Burey has left just for a few minutes. So, but I can, so there are some documents that we can share? Is that, I might be able to.
In your packet, there was, there's some, there's a warrant, a draft warrant for the annual town meeting, so.
When she gets back, she can come up.
Yeah, I'll let her do that. I don't see it up here, but she might have it under something else. So I will let her do that.
So Madam Chair, there are two articles that I just want to take up briefly before we speak with the town moderator about the broader warrant. Article 11 is the capital article. And the DPW director had submitted a $55,000 capital request for a radio system for the department's vehicles. And the capital committee did consider that as part of all the requests. At the time of the discussion, there did not appear to be any funds available to manage that item. And the item, I think, just missed the cut of the recommended articles for this town meeting. But in discussing the details more thoroughly with the DPW director after that meeting, we both feel that there is, there really is a need to move this forward sooner rather than later. Currently, the DPW staff really communicates through their cell phones, which is not, certainly not an ideal way to operate the department. If they were able to set up the two-way radio system, they would be in much better communication with dispatch and with the police and fire and other town servants in order to be able to coordinate their work in the town. And again, I believe the DPW director is on the line. But I will say that in speaking with him, he does believe that he will have sufficient funds remaining at the end of the year to be able to cover the general fund portion of this project. And that if the water and sewer enterprise funds could cover the other two-thirds of the project as part of the FY '21 budget, we would be able to move forward with this and without delaying it to the fall town meeting. And again, this is something that I think does have some operational issues and concerns. And the union has expressed serious concerns about the current situation. So I wanted to put that forward for the Board's consideration tonight for your discussion. So that's the first issue. The second, I believe, is the one I did ask the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee to be available this evening, and he is graciously agreed to do so. I know Wayne Clacco is on the line. And the next item, the next article I wanted the Board to discuss is the Permanent Building Committee has formally requested that the funds from Article 13 be used to augment the original $3.9 million appropriation for the DPW building project. These are funds, if you look at the article and the warrant, these are the funds, the unused funds from other DPW borrowings. These are the residual funds from those borrowings. So this would not have any additional cost to the taxpayers, but would allow the project to move forward. And Madam Chair, I don't know if Wayne has any further comments on this or about the need for the additional $135,000 in funds.
I think that would be helpful, since we've told everybody the 3.9.
So Wayne, if you're on the call, I didn't know if you or Jim McKay want to talk a little bit about the benefits that the additional $135 will, for the project and how the project has developed so far.
Happy to do so. Good evening. A little bit of history. The $3.9 million that was approved last spring, last spring at the town meeting was the number that was given to us by our architect. That number has turned out to be sorely inadequate for the actual construction cost. The way the project stands right now, we're approaching close to 100% construction drawings, but at the 50% level, when we were anticipating that all the work would be done according to the original scope of work, the projected number came out to $4.1 million. And to be over budget at 50% drawings is a major concern. So what we have been doing since that point in time is scaling back the scope of the project. But more importantly, having the DPW self-perform a fair amount of work that we would otherwise pay a general contractor. And so there's some real value in having the DPW perform that work because they can do it frankly at a lesser cost. And we've spent a good deal of time talking about how to mitigate overall cost to the DPW in order to allow. DPW in order to allow that to happen. But even given all of that, we are right up against the $3.9 million number. Now, we've not put this out on the street. We don't know what the actual cost will be. We won't know that until we get bids back. But to not even have the availability of funds that were originally approved for the improvement, for the actual bricks and mortar construction at the DPW, which is something that we always anticipated would be there, puts the project in jeopardy. If we don't, if they were to have the $3.9 million in its total and no contingency arguably, this $135,000 would be the entire amount that we would have to handle any unforeseen cost. And so for that reason, I'd be very reluctant to go ahead with actually allowing the construction to proceed. And I think the entire Permanent Building Committee feels the same way. We just couldn't responsibly go into a contract without the ability to complete it. And if there was any change order that we could not respond to, we'd have to stop. And so the choice, it's a Hobson's choice at that point, is do we stop now or do we stop, you know, once we're halfway in it? So we've spent about $300,000 altogether in design costs already. And if we want to go ahead, and it will be tight, we need to have these additional funds in order to proceed. So that's the thumbnail sketch of where we're at and how we got there. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
I guess the one question is if we got an estimate from them for one thing, and then suddenly it came up, you know, that that was short, I mean, isn't that a questionable business practice?
It's not. You're asking people to predict the future. In the course of any construction project, and it's happening on this project, we send the cost out to an estimator, we send our scope out to an estimator and have them price it. And the costs keep changing all the time, based on construction, the marketplace in Boston, the market, the construction marketplace in suburban Boston. It has to do with energy. There's all kinds of things that go into what the market will bear when you ultimately put this job out on the street. So they're trying to predict the future, and there's no specificity. These people are professionals, and they do a good job, but there's a contingency built in all of this. And so I don't have any concern that our architect gave us a number at that time, which was well over a year ago, that now is off, I'd say, maybe about 10%. And frankly, with the COVID-19, I have no idea what the construction market will be, but we're ready to put this out for bid probably in July or August.
Anybody else have any questions about this?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just to comment on Mr. Clacco's remarks as the Select Board's representative on the Permanent Building Committee, I would just like to reemphasize what he had said earlier about the fact that these dollars, when originally appropriated, and this is just taking money that's already appropriated by the town and then putting it into this project, the money that was authorized several years ago was part of the plan to try and rehab the building, if you will, study it, rehab it, see if we could do something with it. And in the, you know, as that project, that review continued, it became obvious that that was not a good use of the town's money. So I think that this is just a matter of redirecting money that was, in fact, intended for DPW projects on the building to help support the new building. And I think it's an appropriate use of the funding. And I also want to call out the willingness, not only the willingness, but the ability of DPW staff to actually execute quite a bit of site work, which is saving us quite a bit of money so that we can deliver the project. So it's a good working partnership, not only with the Permanent Building Committee, but the ultimate owner of the building, the DPW. And they've really been doing yeoman's work to help us get to where we are right now. And I think this is just an appropriate reinforcement of the town's commitment to them.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm aware of what's happened with this, and I happen to think we're going to be running extraordinarily tight on the budget. But I also think a great deal of thought and effort has gone into what they're doing, Mr. Clacco's committee, to adjust according to the new issues that have arisen in this process. We also have made a commitment as a town to the DPW employees to get them out of the existing facility for their health and for a variety of other reasons. And to do so on a partway basis, where we just build a portion, will cost the town considerably more than if we commit to the entire construction project all at once. So having looked at it from that perspective, I realize it's going to put a lot onto the shoulders of the people in that committee to manage this appropriately. But I think it is incumbent upon us to move ahead with this project, recognizing it's going to be tight, but we have an obligation to the employees of the DPW and to the town now to manage it as tightly as possible. So I think this use of funds, which, again, these funds are not going to cost anyone in the town anymore. These are funds that were already designated for other purposes, trying to work with enhancing the existing facility and correcting some problems. We're just moving them over and have checked it out. It's appropriate so that we have a little extra to buffer us for the construction of the project.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Well, I would just add, although I have grandchildren who are getting ready to go to bed here shortly, apparently wanted to have something to say. In the unlikely event that we don't spend the money, we won't spend the money. And we've done that before, and the town will get the benefit of that. So what we're really asking for is flexibility to go forward.
And Mr. Clacco, other than this article, were you here to discuss anything else in the realm of construction on the Town Warrant? Or was this your primary raison d'etre tonight?
It's the only one I was aware of. So if there was another question, I'd be happy to answer it if somebody else has a question. But I do not.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Clacco of my colleagues with respect to building articles that are here while he is here before he puts his grandchildren Sounds like not. So I did actually have a question. I'm not sure it's been totally resolved. Maybe the town administrator can speak to it, or Mr. McKay. Article 17 is a proposal for, a long-pursued proposal with a complex funding arrangement for improvement of the fields. And the question I have is, some of these improvements are a result of the new proximity between the ball fields and the new playgrounds, as they were cited. And I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for participation by the school project in that piece of the work.
I can briefly, just quickly, discuss that. The improvements that we're looking for with the proximity of moving of the playground and the basketball courts, one has nothing to do with the other. We're looking to put backstops in. I'm sure Wayne can explain what would have to happen if, for them to fund any of this. And so I just don't know how the school project would be able to assist with more fencing in between the, what they're talking about, Wayne, is the walkway and that first baseball diamond. And CPC, we came forward, a group came to add backstops along that first baseball diamond so it would protect the playground and also the kids playing baseball.
Madam Chair, if I might? Just to follow up on what Mr. McKay said, yeah, I don't believe that the Clyde Brown project could, you know, directly assist with this. However, there are a few prior earmarks that may have some relevance here. We are still looking at those. So there certainly may be some funds that could be leveraged towards that project. And that's something that we are still looking at. But I can't give any solid answers tonight as to whether and how much of those funds might be applied. But there are some opportunities for additional funds to help with that project from some prior earmarks from the state, and we're certainly still looking at that.
Good. Very good to hear. We're just trying to get that wrapped, so. Excellent. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for Mr. Clacco? I just would like to say that your committee works an amazing number of hours tirelessly. You're a volunteer, so I just want to thank you for another year of service.
I am a volunteer?
You're a volunteer. Check in the mail, Wayne. A hat tip to you and to your entire committee for overseeing the most demanding project in the town's history. So congratulations. It's beautiful, and we look forward to having it reopen.
Great. Well, so do we. It pains us to see it closed up, so we certainly agree and are working towards that end as well. So thank you.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much, and thank you to your entire committee. And hopefully, they will all be completing their volunteer talent form, which is on the town website, to re-up in some way. Hopefully, they've had a good time and will want to continue to do so.
Will do. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else have any questions for him, so he can go put his grandchildren to bed? I think we're good. All right. Excellent. Yes.
Just a question. I don't know if the board wants to address these two articles now or after your discussion with the town moderator about some of her proposals. So I just wanted to see which way you wanted to go on that this evening.
I think it would make sense for us, since nobody was asking specific questions of Mr. Clacco here, I don't think there are any. I think it would make sense to just hear the different configurations of the Town Meeting Warrant, and then we can discuss, then we can make some discussion, we can make some decisions on the articles that are in the respective package that we opt to take.
Very good.
There's members of our finance committee who are on this call, too, and they may want to ask some questions as well.
Great. Well, Madam Chair, again, in your packet, there is a different-looking draft Town Meeting, Annual Town Meeting Warrant with 17 articles on it that the town moderator had submitted, at least for the board's consideration, based upon the goals of having a really expedited Town Meeting without any controversial articles or articles that need a great deal of explanation, comment, and/or debate. So I'm sure she will talk about that a little bit, but just to outline for the board, and moderator can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the articles that are being proposed for possible elimination from the warrant and deferral until the fall Town Meeting, numbered from your original version, would be Articles 19, 20, and 21. And those have to do with senior tax exemptions and exemption levels, and with the idea of postponing that to the fall. And then Articles 22 and 23, which are bylaw changes, which often have a high level of debate and a lot of questions in regards to the impact of those changes. And Articles 26 and 27, which are the OPEP Funding and Stabilization Fund, which, as you can imagine, regrettably, we probably are not looking at contributing any money towards those funds at the annual Town Meeting. And also, the town moderator had put together as part of the proposed warrant a consent agenda for certain articles that are standard and really, if ever, have any questions or debate. So that's the summary, Madam Chair. So I'll leave it there for the board and the town moderator for any comments, questions in regards to her proposal.
I think we should probably invite the town moderator to enlighten the board and the community about what she's proposing, the benefits, and the approach to the meeting.
Thank you. So given that we have the current health crisis right now, I've been following very closely with the Mass Moderator Association what other towns have been doing. Everyone is pretty much in agreement to attempt to streamline their Town Meetings so that they can be as efficient as possible. Since everything with this appears to be kind of in flux, I was hoping to try to reduce the warrant down to things that were absolutely necessary to be done by June 30th. There are a lot of things on here that will go quickly and typically go quickly, which is why I'm also proposing to group some together in a consent agenda. I have personally no issue with any of the articles, so it's not any kind of a personal opinion. But from what I've been listening to in all of the meetings as of late, the three tax credit-related ones appear to have very low use at the moment. And while, I mean, they sound great, and if it could benefit somebody, you know, great, I don't know that we need to spend the time on that right now. Also, that the members of the community that may be more interested in that article may be also members of the community that may opt to not attend Town Meeting at this time. So in the interest of fairness with the demographics and in shortening the meeting, I chose to propose those three. Also, the two bylaws, while it's sometimes hard to predict how controversial they will be, one out of the two, I would predict, would definitely have a lot of debate. And unless there is some outstanding issue that requires that this has to be done as soon as humanly possible, I would say it should be tabled until the fall, which will hopefully be a better climate for us to have a big congregation for a meeting. And then, as Mr. Gazinski said, the last two items, we didn't sound like we'd be putting much there anyway. So again, in the interest of streamlining things, I took those off as well.
Does anybody have any questions for our town moderator, any comments? I guess first from my colleagues, Mr. McCaffrey or Mr. Germaine.
Well, Madam Chair, I want to thank the moderator for pulling this together, a concrete proposal. Having had some experience as a moderator, I think it's a very important idea for us to try to streamline the conversation at the end of this month. And I do think we should focus on things we need to accomplish in order to operate. So those other things are important. Clearly, they are important. But as a subsidiary goal, I mean, I would just say, first of all, there may well be articles among these 17 that still generate significant debate, whether it's budget or what have you. It's not to avoid debate. It's really to try and focus on those items that we need to operate, starting on July 1st. So I think it's important for us to take this opportunity to do that and, you know, set a goal of trying to get this done in an hour so people can deliberate, think about it, cast their vote, and go home to the safety of their own living quarters. it, uh, cast their vote and go home to the safety of their own living room.
I concur with, excuse me, I concur with my colleague that I think the articles that she's suggesting in terms of condensing some, combining some, removing some at this time make a lot of sense, they've been given a lot of thought, and I happen to agree that there are some in here that certainly are going to entail some debate if we were to move forward with them, um, and there's no reason that we can't defer them without any subsequent major loss to the community. So I like the idea. I think it's, again, something we should consider and consider in terms of the situation that the town is facing with respect to COVID at this time. So I applaud what she has done and think it's very useful.
So just so that the community understands, those people who, uh, may not be looking at this document, um, there's a com- a proposed compression of the number of articles, um, with, uh, removal of articles that have to do with an ex- potential expansion, eligibility expansion for some, uh, tax release programs, tax relief programs through the assessor's office, um, a bylaw change to swap the sequence of the, uh, town elections and town meeting in the spring, and, uh, and also a town bylaw to change the policies by which, uh, homeowners that have sewer access at the end of their driveways, uh, would be either required to hook up and/or, um, or, or otherwise, uh, have some other policy of, of not being el- of being rendered ineligible at some time. It's, that's a long time discussion that the select board's been having for the entire duration of my term of service, so, um, I know that the board feels that this is a really important thing to do in the community. So I think we should probably make a decision as a group as to if we want to go ahead and, and accept the moderator's, uh, recommendation for the, um, condensed, uh, warrant, and then we would be looking at the warrant articles as they've been renumbered, uh, and packaged in the consent format.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, I would make a motion that the board, uh, adopt the model warrant that has been proposed by the town moderator for the annual spring town meeting.
I will second that.
Uh, so it's been moved and seconded and I will pull the board to adopt the condensed town meeting warrant.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I just ask the board, in the meantime, if you take a vote to open the warrant, um, for the insertion?
Sorry.
Um, uh, it, it would need to be done at some point. I don't know if you're comfortable doing it now or doing right after this vote, but just to, just to make sure that we're in conformance with opening the warrant.
Your audio cut out with me, so I'll, I'll go out, I'll go with whatever it is. Can somebody revamp the motion to reflect whatever Mr. Gazinski said because I didn't hear it?
So, so, sorry, Loring, I'll, I'll just reiterate. He's just looking, at some point you need to open and close the warrant if you're going to change articles, so I don't know if you need to do that prior to making this vote or directly thereafter.
Well, um-
I believe that, uh, we can just take the vote because it's the directional vote and then we'll open the warrant.
Okay.
Go through the articles as the chair indicated earlier.
Perfect.
And close it.
All right. Just a reminder, thank you.
So with that said, the, uh, it's been moved and seconded that we, uh, the select board adopt for the spring town meeting, the town moderator's condensed version of the, uh, test spring town meeting warrant, and I will pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. So that has been adopted. Uh, the other articles will be pushed forward to the fall, and now I would entertain a motion to open the town meeting warrant for the spring twenty-twenty town meeting.
Madam Chair, I moved that the board open, reopen the warrant for the spring annual town meeting, uh, twenty.
Uh, so moved and seconded, I'll pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. So at this point, what we're going to do for the town, and I am watching the clock, it's seven, um, I'm going to ask our town administrator to walk us through, uh, the articles as they are here. I will ask my coll- he, we'll just have an open conversation. My colleagues will ask any questions. We will go to the community who has any questions. I would certainly, um, invite our colleagues from the finance committee to chime in as appropriate, and then we will close the town meeting warrant. Mr. Gazinski, you have the floor.
Oh, you're on mute, mics. There you go.
Sorry about that, sorry about that.
We agreed with everything you said.
Yeah, it was fabulous.
It was a moment.
I was going to ask for a vote in favor. Um, so, uh, I knew that would happen to me eventually. So, uh, uh, with your indulgence, Madam Chair, I'll just go through every article, um, in a, in a fairly rapid succession, and the board can, um, if you like, can choose to maintain, remove, or alter any of the articles in here, um, as we go through. So Article One, um, these are unpaid bills, this has been unchanged, and I, I recommend the board maintain as submitted.
Are there any questions? Should I stop after each article to ask if there's any questions? Does that make most sense?
Derek, I would say, um, to leave, just leave them as is if there's no change and then they're staying in.
Okay.
Um, Article Two, again, is the, um, uh, fairly standard article we have to do the transfers, um, for wages and expenses at the end of the year. Uh, as the board is aware, we're going to be doing interdepartmental transfers, um, at your meeting on June fifteenth, so this would just be simply for any items that included in those transfers. So again, I recommend that that article stay as is. Uh, Article Three is our standard budget article, um, and again, that's, uh, I recommend that stay as presented. Uh, Articles Four, Five, and Six are enterprise articles. Again, I recommend those stay as submitted. Um, so, um, I'll go through all these articles, but, um, again, they're, they're part of, some of these are part of the consent article, so just, just so you're aware of that.
Can you just, Mr. Gazinski, for those who might be listening at home or for whom the word consent in this context is new, can you just explain what a consent agenda is or our town moderator can?
Sure, I'll, I'll give it a shot and then the moderator or, or the former moderator can correct me. Um, so the consent agenda is essentially a conglomeration of articles that are put together under one article. Um, usually these, these sub items consist of, uh, articles that, uh, generally are approved every year with little to no debate, um, and this is done as really a, a measure to keep the meeting flowing so that the precious time of the town meeting is used on items, uh, that are needed for true debate and discussion, and these housekeeping items can be addressed in a more rapid manner. So that's, that's, that's my thirty-second summary. I don't know if that, if anyone has any additions to that.
That sounded perfect.
All right. Um, so just for the purposes, again, just to remind, um, everyone, the consent agenda that the board just, um, approved, uh, of the amendments to the personnel plan, um, the Board of Health Appointing Authority, the revolving funds, and the Community Preservation Fund. So again, um, Article Seven is listed here that I'm going through, that's included in the consent agenda. That should stay unchanged as far as the, its inclusion. Uh, in the warrant, uh, Article Eight is the independent audit, um, that, um, should stay unchanged. Uh, Article Nine, again, that's within the consent agenda. Article Ten, that's within the consent agenda. Article Eleven, um, is the, um, capital article. Uh, again, I'm recommending that one change to that article as, uh, proposed earlier this evening. I don't know if the board has any comments or questions, um, before you make a decision on whether to make that change or not.
Uh, yes, I do have a comment I'd like to make if this is the time to do it.
Please.
Yeah, um, this item, which is the radios for the DPW, I just want to make sure that from my perspective, folks understand what happened here. This was presented to the Capital Planning Committee, and the Capital Planning Committee, of course, as we know, goes through a prioritization, uh, of projects that it believes are, are, um, a higher priority than others. There's, there was some concern, asked by members of that committee, uh, about, about the nature of the, the, uh, the capital item itself, and that's due to the lack of funds. So I think it would be reasonable if this board decides to put that, uh, uh, item on the agenda, that we have some sort of correspondence or perhaps from the town administrator back to the Capital Planning Committee, explain to them why we've taken this position, just because at the end of the day, they've made a recommendation which is different from this, and I think it's important for us to do an outreach to them, see if there is some way for us to, uh, agree on this. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves at town meeting with a capital committee report that is not supportive of all the items in this agenda. I'm sorry, in this, in this capital article.
Madam Chair?
Please.
My only concern in this, and Mr. McCaffrey is our board representative to the Capital Planning Committee, is we in essence, as a board, which is our prerogative, are overriding a recommendation from the Capital Planning Committee, a committee that we've worked very hard to set up and get working and to make clear that we really want to listen to what they have to say. Uh, don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting that what's here isn't important, but on the other hand, I think it's important that we listen and understand, listen to and understand what the Capital Planning Committee was thinking when they chose not to include this in the original, uh, list of items. But I guess that's what's disturbing me a little bit. It's not necessarily the amount of the funding, because I understand where it's coming from, or anything else. It has to do with, we're in essence, changing a priority, if I can phrase it that way. So I guess I'm going to ask my colleague how that sits. Obviously, we have the right to do so, but I'm reluctant at this point, but I'd like to get a clarification on that.
Well, Madam Chair, if I might, I, I certainly agree with my colleague that the placement of the art, items of the warrant is the responsibility of the, this, this select board. We're getting advice from the Capital Planning Committee, which we will certainly, we'd certainly consider. Uh, the Capital Planning Committee under the bylaw also has an obligation to report to the town meeting, which it's bound to be doing. So I believe that if we, if we feel as though we want to include this item on the warrant, probably the timing is such that we have to put it on there. That doesn't mean that we don't ultimately reach, uh, some, A, some agreement with Capital Planning and B, and/or B, that we ultimately do not support it on the town meeting floor, but, um, I, I do think that the, the process that was, that the Capital Planning Committee has gone through is important for us to try and respond to, but not as my colleague indicated, we're not totally wedded to it. I mean, if we believe that from a substantive point of view, we've been convinced that, um, this is an important item which ought to have, um, priority, then I think we have an obligation to go forward with that. But I just want to leave, uh, leave us respectful of their role, correspond with them directly, and if there's, uh, you know, some other, uh, position they want to take, that, that would be fine. I mean, this is, this is obviously going to happen with capital projects over the life of all of us, so I, I do think that it's, uh, I, I just wanted to point out the fact that it was not, the Capital Planning Committee is not trying to take positions based upon whether or not there's available funding. They're trying to prioritize projects based upon the cross-departmental, uh, representations that have been made for all departments. So, um, if we believe that, uh, town administrator and the director of the Department of Public Works have made a strong case, we should certainly proceed on that basis, but perhaps we should correspond with the Capital Planning Committee directly to explain to them why we did it.
I think that's something can, uh, Mr. Gazinski, can you write a note, uh, with the board sentiments in this respect? I, I definitely agree that the Capital Planning Committee did this really excellent job. They had a, um, a priority algorithm that they, all projects had to get dropped into, and where they landed on the sequence list, uh, required that they hit all these different markers along the way. Um, for me, this is fairly, um, straightforward and it may have been because I was involved in the discussions, um, of the now ratified DPW union, but the nature of their work, I think, is, uh, very, um, different than, uh, maybe a conventional office-based employee and where field communication is imperative, not just from, uh, a deployment standpoint, but also from a safety standpoint, but also the nature of what they're doing is such that, you know, if somebody, you know, drops their thousand-dollar iPhone, and yes, folks, that's what they cost, you know, down the sewer hatch, um, you know, where's the responsibility and, uh, to, whether it's the employee or the town in terms of, um, you know, requiring that, that they provide their own communication? They in fact had, had, uh, wanted us to address this in the context of their, of their, uh, contract, and we had gone back to them and said, we had this radio system that was in the pipeline and, and they were satisfied with that. So to me, it's a practicality issue, the nature of what they do, the nature of what they touch, um, and the cost of a conventional cellphone, I don't think is something that we can require of, um, our field workers, uh, from the DPW. But that's where I personally come down on this, and I don't know if my colleagues feel otherwise.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, the, the-
Mrs. Harry Johnston, we just have to introduce you, sorry.
Okay. Um, so the, I just wanted you to, um, to realize that the DPW does currently, um, have four, uh, town-owned cellphones and that are paid for monthly. Um, Mr. McKay has one, I'm not sure who have the other three cellphones for the DPW, but the DPW do, does have their own cellphones, a town-owned cellphone, as far as, uh, we have three beepers.
I think this is more, as I understand it, it's having everybody on literally and figuratively on the same radio channel, and it also, I believe, ties into the, um, local emergency planning, uh, uh, management agency, so I think there's other functions of the radio system that are different from a cellphone.
Right, and I just wanted to make it clear that, and, and that's, that's great, um, but that there are some town-owned, uh, cellphones for the DPW.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to contact the, um, Capital Planning Committee to inform them of the board's sentiments and, and decision in this matter, so, um, I can, I can certainly do that within the next day or so, send it over to them.
Are my colleagues comfortable with that as a, as an approach?
Well, Madam Chair, I certainly feel comfortable with that. I do think we should be deciding what the article's going to say tonight, um, and corresponding accordingly, because there will be other times to discuss this, both capital planning and the, uh, and the finance committee. So do, a motion to amend this as presented here, to include the DPW radios?
Yes, uh, in, in an amount of, uh, thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars, um, from the water and sewer enterprise funds.
What's the number again?
What's?
Uh, it's thirty-six thousand, six hundred.
Okay. So I would make the motion that, uh, now what we have in front of us, Mike, is Article Nine.
Yeah, can you say that, Mike? Mike, I have, I have, uh, on the screen, Article Nine from Aaron's, uh, our moderator's version.
Right, there might, there might be some differences from the articles I'm reading because I'm going from the original list.
Yeah.
And just need the board to act on the articles that are supposed to be eliminated, but I need to go through the original list. Um, so it's Article Eleven on the original, and on the updated, it is Article Nine.
Okay.
So if you want, I'll make a motion to amend Article Eleven then, which will get renumbered.
Yes.
To include the DPW radios at the cost of thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars as one of the, uh, um, capital items.
Madam Chair, I see the thirty-six, but I also see submitted fifty-five thousand.
Yeah.
I think that, that other piece is from the general fund, Madam Chair. That's going to be, um, funded before the end of this fiscal year, but again, that's not, that piece is not being requested as part of Article Eleven.
Oh, I see.
Well, it would seem-
Right?
It would seem to me that we have an obligation to at least state, here's- state, here's the total of what it's costing, and here's where the funding is coming from.
Right, I recommend that be listed in the finance committee's informational bulletin, that they do usually put information in there to notify the public of the details, but in my past discussions with town council, they don't recommend that type of extra language in the written articles, but it should be included in the finance committee's explanations when they send out their informational packet to every household in the community. So I will certainly speak with the chair of the finance committee to ask if that be included, to explain the other portion of that purchase.
Okay, and the other thing I'm noticing is it says here, $18,333, which then becomes $36,666. Is that correct?
You've got me, we need to add the other $66, yes.
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 That's what I said.
That's what I heard, Jim.
I originally said 600.
Somebody has said 600. I apologize to my colleague for not hearing.
No, I didn't say it, I didn't say it. I'm trying to cover my trust.
Did somebody second or no?
I'll second it.
All right. All right, it's been moved and seconded to, for the select board to amend what is now Article 9. Will it stay Article 9?
Yes.
Stay Article 9 to include a contribution toward the DPW radio system in the amount of $36,666 I will pull the board, and this also parenthetically includes a communication by the town administrator to the capital planning committee with the rationale for this recommendation and position. I will pull the board, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. So that will be amended.
Thank you. So the next article, and if you want, I won't give the article number, because that seems to be causing some confusion, but the next article is...
Can I just, I'm sorry, can I just go back to Article 9? I noticed that we have a couple of things that are recurrent, you've got police year cruiser leases, and you've got the water tank improvement program, and I'm wondering, given what you just said, when you have multiple sources in the warrant, you can't have that, but I'm wondering if, is it allowed to put even just in parentheses, year run of three or year run of 20 or something like that, so that people can see that right here, or is that also too complicated for the warrant document?
Madam Chair, that's typically the explanation portion that I asked.
Yes, I know that.
I think that goes myself.
We couldn't, we can't say annual lease?
Because it changes.
Okay.
That does change year to year. So the next article is the article for the lease purchase of computers for the middle schools, $23,300. I recommend that stay as presented. The next article the board discussed earlier was the chair of the permanent building committee. I think I recommend that it go forward as requested by the permanent building committee.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that the board approve the amendment to the article so that the $135,000 in unused funds be devoted to the DPW building project.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, I will pull the board for this motion, Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. So this article will reflect the earlier decision and information from tonight by the chair of the permanent building committee to add the $135,000.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mike, I'm sorry, is that, are you adding that article or amending that article?
It's an amendment.
To the amendment, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that is amended. The next article is for the approval of the authorization for the select board to enter the contract of up to 20 years for the inspecting, maintaining, repairing, modifying, and providing asset management services for the town's water tanks at Farm Street and Walnut Streets. I recommend that article stay as presented. The next article is part of the consent agenda, that is, the community preservation fund The next article is the preservation and rehab of the FMA, I recommend that stay on it as presented. The next article, the community preservation fund open space reserve, and their community preservation fund budget reserve for the memorial fields improvement project, I recommend that stay as presented.
Madam Chair? Yes, sir. I'd like to ask a question. On that article, do we have sufficient funding to make sure that it's not just a portion that we're funding out of this article?
Well, there are some questions in regards to that. As I had mentioned earlier, there are some earmarks that we're reviewing to confirm that we can use for the, to supplement the funds put forward for this project. I would expect we'll have definitive answers on that prior to town meeting, but the answer tonight is, right now, I believe the requested amount here is $74,000. Jim, can you, Jim McKay, can you confirm that, that the amount that's currently put forward?
Yes, that's correct, that's the amount that the CPC gave. So the contract that, if you, the contracts and the funds that Mike's talking about, I sent a request in to the DCR that we not change the funds, but we reallocate, which we can do that, and it is part of the contract, that you can do that, but as we know, the DCR has been closed for the past three months.
Yeah, there are difficulties in trying to get clearances from the state, March on some things that just they don't see as a high priority, and it's been a little frustrating, but we're going to continue to work on it and raise it up the chain and see if we can get a clear answer prior to town meeting, so that we can answer that question. But right now, the amount we have based on the CPC is approximately $74,000.
Then the question I have is $74,000, assuming we can get it sufficient, and number two, what does our finance director think in terms of our ability to obtain that $74,000?
Well, the $74,000, Steve, is already, is in the CPC fund, if that's correct.
Okay, but there's an additional amount.
Oh, the additional amount.
This is Carol. So originally, the SLAB program went to the CPC for $86,000. They were told they were going to have, they had an additional $12,000 that they could use from some grant, which was the flag ground, elementary school grant, the one that Mr. McKay's speaking of, that was awarded in, I believe, was fiscal year 14. Those funds aren't available to be used for that project unless they get somebody from the state, from DCR, saying that we can reappropriate those funds to be used for this project. The CPC does have available in their open space account $89,000, so we would have sufficient amount to fund the $86,000 in total, but the vote was for $74,000.
So if I'm interpreting it correctly, there will be insufficient funds if the state denies this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so should we not wait?
The scope of the work is...
Excuse me, Jim, so should we not wait until we know that the state is going to approve it, since there are no additional funds that we are prepared to put into it at this time?
Well, I think that question comes back to the pros and cons of waiting to do the work on the project. I mean, if it really determines if the town, you know, determines this project is worthy of moving forward with in a more expedited fashion, then I would say we could move forward and do that and get the confirmation. If there's a concern that, you know, it might tie up these funds to the next town meeting, and that we, it's not that urgent to get this work done, then certainly it could wait till a future town meeting. But that comes back to the relative urgency of getting this work done, having the fields, having the fields updated and improved.
I'm not against the fields being updated and improved, what I'm concerned with is potentially committing a portion of funds without knowing for certain that the full funding is not available, and that then does tie up the whole project. So I guess I'm concerned that we're voting on something for which we do not have adequate information for confirmation that the funds will be there at this time, and that does concern me.
So what would happen is we would eliminate one of the backstops, which is $12,000, and the price of the scope, and that's what would happen, it would be taken off, and then if the funding came in through the state, which those funds, if, you know, they're available, then would put the backstop back in.
Then what I would recommend is we agree to the entire amount without the backstop. If state agrees to those other funds, then you'll use those funds for the backstop, but what we're approving is what's specific to the fields here, not including the backstop.
That's correct.
So we have an understanding that what we're voting on here is everything exclusive of the backstop, and that the funds that you will get from the state will be used for the backstop.
If I can, Madam Chair, if I can.
Please.
The project is $111,000, and $25,000 is coming from the planning board. This $25,000 was appropriated from Toll Brothers for maintenance and, not upkeep, maintenance and repairs of all fields. That was appropriated at a planning board meeting several months ago. The $74,000 is all that the CPC is funding, that's all that you're voting on, is the $74,000. The project, if it doesn't come in, then it will have to be scaled back like any other project that anybody votes on.
I guess what concern, I'm now hearing $111,000. I guess what I'm saying is I'm uncomfortable with the way this article is written at this time.
I don't know what you're talking, I'm sorry, Mr. Jermaine, I don't understand, if you read, if you read the packet that was sent on this project, it stated the cost and the breakdown of all the payments.
Just stated what my concern is.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's the nature of the article. This article, which is acting on a recommendation from the CPC, is to appropriate this money toward a project. I believe that the board retains the responsibility, once the project is actually fully proposed, to award contracts to do the work. So we're not giving up control over the project, in fact, we retain it. All we're doing is authorizing the use of that money if in fact a project is presented to us, that will be able to be paid for at least partially by that project. So I agree, if it weren't for the fact that this is actually appropriating CPC money, this was a capital article separately stated, you know, I might feel differently. This is more like an enabling article rather than an awarding article, I guess is the way I look at it. And if we don't do it, then clearly the money is not going to be available until the fall.
If we look at it as my colleague has just pointed out, as enabling, and we retain control with respect to ultimate funding, I don't have so much of a concern. I just, as you understand, my concern is the ambiguity when you get into something like this, and I don't want it to catch us in the long run, just because we overlook something in the way it's rooted.
Well, I guess, I would ask the town administrator to confirm, might be, just make sure I have it right. I mean, once a contract is for the project actually presented, then the board has the authority to grant it or not.
Correct. So basically, the $25,000 through the planning board would have to be released from the planning board for the purpose of this project. This releases, this would release the funds from the CPC funds for the project, and we would get confirmation from the state for the use of the earmark funds, and then the board would, the select board would have to approve the actual contract for the project to move forward.
Okay, I'm much more comfortable with that. I would hope that when the finance committee presents it, that it will be presented in that context, I think it will be much more clear to everyone, because quite honestly, I was confused when I look at how it's written at this point.
There's a lot of funding sources, so I...
That's it.
In that.
It's been a lot of funding sources, and you'll hear later on this very agenda, actually, a proposal to address just your concern, Mr. Jermaine, which is kind of coordination holistically of fields in general, just so that everybody's talking at the same time, at the same table, making decisions as a group. But I have to say that I do share the concern, some of the concerns are obviously safety, and one of the obvious opportunities is that we have this unique situation of rested fields, so it's a really good opportunity to make good use of repair and construction while they're not in use in season. So I'm comfortable going forward with this.
That's fine, I have no problem with the purpose it was intended.
Yes.
I just have a problem with the process that we see it here, but that's fine.
Now we're on to Article 15, if there are no other questions or comments about this?
Yes, Madam Chair. This article is for the transfer for the rate and taxation of funds for the $15,600 for the fiscal year 2021, personal property interim year inspections and real estate interim year evaluations. This is done on a regular basis for the town, so I recommend that article be submitted as presented. The next three articles...
Can I just ask, is this one, when somebody goes into a business and then says, I want to see your records for your computers and your bookshelves, and then charges purchase tax when they've already paid sales tax, is that what this amounts to?
No, this is not, you're thinking of a sales tax out by the state. This is personal property gathering, all of the businesses have to pay, just like townspeople pay real estate taxes, they have to pay personal property taxes for the items within their business.
So it's kind of a double jeopardy tax, right? You've already paid tax, and now you're going to pay them again?
It's not a double jeopardy tax, it's, you know, the same as a real estate tax, only it's on their personal property and not on the...
I would say, it's more like an excise tax. I mean, you pay your sales tax for the car, but you still have to pay the local excise tax.
Thank you.
Don't thank me, wasn't my idea.
No. I just, I feel a lot of pain from businesses, so when I see something like this, it makes me want to say, can't we exempt this? Because businesses are really hurting.
We can, we are required by law to properly report and assess these taxes, and, you know, certainly we could get some additional information from the Department of Revenue if the board wants some more clarity on the process and the statutory framework upon which we go through this process, but it is required as part of the, as part of the taxing process of the town.
I would just say for the community, I think that that extra check would make sense in any respect, simply because every aspect of government has been in some way impacted by the current state of affairs with coronavirus. So to the extent that there's been anything that's modified, it would be incumbent upon us to know that.
So that item I recommend maintaining on the warrant. The next three items have to do with the senior tax relief. The first one having to do is MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, to change the eligibility to increase the annual gross receipts of seniors from $20,000 to $40,000 for eligibility. And then out of the 21, it's along similar lines to... And then Article 21 is along similar lines to increase the value of the whole estate available for eligibility for certain tax exemptions and reductions. And, actually, I skipped one, I'm sorry. The first one is the senior tax exemption, Clause 41c. And again, that has to do with the age requirement changing from 65 to, from 70 to 65. So again, he's all about expanding eligibility for seniors to be able to access certain tax reductions and tax exemption. So again, in the interest of, of trying to make the town meeting more expedited and less complicated, I think the recommendation is to simply move these to the fall town meeting, these three articles. So I'd like to get the board's decision on those three articles.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that the board delete from the draft Articles 19, 20, and 21.
I'll second that.
That's so moved and seconded, I will pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes.
I do so reluctantly, but.
Well, yeah, this is not what we would do if we were in any other normal circumstance. That's.
I understand.
All right, Madam Chair.
I guess I'm confused. Can I just ask a sec? I mean, I'm looking at the town moderator's proposal, so mine only goes up to Article 17.
Right, that's because there's certain articles that are being deleted as part of, and certain articles are being combined under one consent agenda article.
Right.
19, 20, and 21, she deleted.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I mean, unless you go back, scroll back to the original one, then those are the numbers, but otherwise.
No, I guess I'm looking at Article 16, and it's made it on to this, so.
So that's Article 24 here.
Right. Okay. Right. No, I understand that. I just, I thought where it landed on the town, the moderator's recommendation, that we were keeping the items that were recommended structurally.
For example, Article 7 that she's got is really a combination of 7, 9, 10, and 15. Yeah, right. So the next two articles are general bylaw articles. And the first one pertains to changing the date of the town meeting. And the, so it says here, the annual town meeting for the transaction of business would be held on the first Monday of May, and the annual town meeting for the election of officers and such other matters, as may be voted on, official ballot will be held on the second Monday of May. So that basically reverses the order. But again, that's been recommended to be deferred until the fall town meeting, again to avoid having a long debate about this item. And it, it, there's really no drawback whatsoever to delaying this item, because it really wouldn't take effect until next May. So whether it's got with now or the fall town meeting, it would not affect its implementation or timing of implementation. So I don't know if there's any questions on the elimination of that article.
No, the board was in unanimous support of it.
Okay. The next article is the sewer connection bylaw.
Sorry, excuse me, Mike, do we need to do a motion or?
We're after this one, okay?
You want to do both? Okay.
So Article 20, well, the next article, the sewer connection bylaw, this would institute some requirements for property owners to hook up to the town sewer under certain conditions. This would most likely generate a great deal of discussion and debate, and therefore it's being recommended this be deferred, at a minimum deferred until the fall town meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that the town warrant be amended by eliminating Articles 22 and 23.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Before I make, confirm that motion, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Article 23, to me, is, and I think to all of us, a very important article, one that we need to face up to. The only reason we're deferring it at this time is because of the situation we're in in COVID, but it require, will require a lot and should entertain a lot of discussion at the town meeting. It's important, I think, to understand that we are not deferring this because we don't think the article is important. In fact, it's quite the contrary. But there are already concerns for how long the meeting lasts and other things, so that we are, I am going to second the motion that was made by my colleague. But I do so with the understanding that this is a very important change that needs to be made for the town and should be entertained at the November town meeting.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, to the comments that with respect to the sewer bylaw, a couple people asked me, so I just want to put this into the hopper for future consideration, which is, can there be a renunciation of one's rights if one decides not to? And I know you can't answer this now, I just want to put it on the table so that the people who asked me about it know that it's been pushed forward. If you decide, if, if you want to not opt in to sewer, do you have the ability as an amendment to your property deed to renounce your availability, your property's availability to do so as some sort of established right, simply by proximity? So I know that nobody can answer that, but I simply want to keep going.
Well, actually, that is a question, that is a question I asked at one of the meetings.
Okay.
And the answer that came back was, there's a problem. I can rescind my right, but when I go to resell my property.
Yeah.
I cannot deny the new property owner the opportunity to connect to the sewer. Therefore, this connection remains in play, and therefore, they do not allow you to essentially rescind your right.
Permanently change the deed. I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I can, you know, I can back that, support that by saying that I have had discussions with the town council, and he had some extreme legal concerns about that approach, about certain rights of properties and property owners, that that was a slippery slope. He wouldn't recommend the town go down and would be easily challenged in court. So he had concerns about that approach.
I appreciate the discussion. If there's no more, I'm going to, we've had, we have a motion that's been moved and seconded. I would pull the board to delete, to push to the fall town meeting in 2020, the current Articles Number 22, the town bylaw change, to switch the date of the sequencing of the town meeting and the election in the spring, and Town 3, a town bylaw to change the mandated sewer hookup policy. I will pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. Moving on, Mr. Town Administrator, to Article Number 24.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Article 24 is a fairly standard article for appropriating funds for Medicare and Medicaid reimbursement services, and I recommend that that article maintain its plates on the warrant.
May I make a comment?
Please.
This is important because it actually brings money into the town, and that's why we want to keep this article. I think it, we, it costs us something like $5,000, and we end up bringing in between $30,000 and $40,000 each year by accepting this article.
That's correct.
That's an important notation, okay.
And then the next article, Madam Chair, is the appropriating $75,000 for the unemployment insurance fund. The fund is starting to run low, and we do need to put funds into that account every so often, so that is needed heading into next fiscal year.
Can you just explain really briefly that we don't have the conventional situation with an independent insurance firm that you hear about so much now in, in standard conversation because we're self-insured?
Absolutely. Unlike private businesses that are required to purchase and maintain unemployment insurance, most municipalities in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts are self-insured, which basically means we have to set aside the funds necessary to cover any unemployment claims that result as, as the effect of any furloughs or layoffs that occur in the community. So there is a direct cost to the town whenever an employee of the town is furloughed or laid off, and those funds cover those costs. So basically, they apply to the state, the state pays that amount, and then the state assesses a charge to, to the town, the community, for its costs related to the unemployment. And these funds would go towards paying those, that, that assessment from the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
And Articles 26 and 27, again, I mentioned earlier that I don't believe, I do not believe that these articles would be necessary at the town meeting, could be expunged from the warrant, and to help streamline the warrant even further. So I'm recommending that Articles 26 and 27 be removed from the warrant.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I move that the board delete Items 26 and 27 from the town meeting warrant, the spring town meeting of 2020.
And once again, before I second that motion, I do have a couple of comments. I am concerned that we at least identify to those who look with respect to Opel, even if we can't fund it or can fund it to the smallest amount, that we show good faith. I don't know if by ignoring it, we're even doing that. I understand that we're not, we don't have the funds, or we did, we put very minimal amount. I just want to make sure that we understand that they do look at that, and they look at how we're funding it each year. It's something that we probably have to consider in the fall, assuming there are funds available. Stabilization, fortunately, is in reasonable shape at this time. I'm just wondering if we ought to at least advise the town, here's the status of the stabilization fund, but we aren't going to add to it at this time. So those are my comments. Before I second it, do I have any other thoughts from anyone as to whether we ought to keep either one or the other on there? My inclination is we ought to report to the town on stabilization.
I would think that the Finance Committee through the chair would be giving in their introduction to the town meeting, an overview of the state of the town from a financial standpoint, and would be inclined to be adding that with or without our recommendation, but we can certainly recommend that. But I'm in agreement that there's no reason to put an article on when we're not going to even discuss it.
Well, Madam Chair, I, I would think these are important issues, again, but the overriding concern is to streamline the meeting.
Right.
And by the time we get through, you know, Medicaid services, I think there'll be, hopefully, several people anxious to get out of the room, so for this purpose, again, only because it's an extraordinary.
I will second the motion. I would just ask that the FINCOM at least mention the stabilization in their remarks.
That sounds fun. And Mr. Gazinski, if you could add that to the communication for the other changes that we've made heretofore, that would be great, as a request to the, to the chair. It's been moved and seconded that the amended town meeting warrant include the deletion of what are currently Articles 26 and 22. I will pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. And with that, are there any other further questions on the town meeting warrant for 2020 from anybody on this call? Concerns, jokes, ideas, recommendations for dinner? I would like to make my last motion to close the town meeting warrant for the spring 2020 for the town of Milis. Is there a second?
Yes, second, second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the town meeting warrant. I will pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. So we will transmit the revised town meeting warrant, restructured with the moderators' consolidation from a, to be cognizant of the public health situation, and we'll transmit that to the powers that be with FINCOM, and I presume to the school committee as well, so they can see our thinking and support.
Yes, we will, we will forward this to the Finance Committee during the day tomorrow, the final warrant, and we do send a copy out, and we will send a copy out to all the department heads, including the school department.
Excellent.
I just want to make sure that, you know, you feel, Mr. Gazinski, that we've covered the fact that it's, we didn't just adopt the moderator's proposal, we adopted it with two changes.
Yes.
One is the capital item, which is now Article 9, to include the radios, and also the real, which is now, in the reallocation of the funds to the DPW project.
Yes.
So that, we've adopted it as amended.
Yes.
I'm moving on to agenda item, Madam Chair, Lisa Harden.
Yeah. Did, did the motion include that you were going to sign the warrant?
That, that's next. That's the next agenda item.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
So having closed the warrant, Mr. Gazinski, would you like to make a recommendation here?
Yes, Madam Chair, I, I'm recommending that the board vote to approve and authorize the signature of the annual town meeting warrant as amended.
Is, can that be done electronically, since at the end of the day, they're going to end up being printed?
I believe, I believe so. I believe we can have the board electronically sign that page, so we'll, we'll work to get that out to the board during the day tomorrow for signature.
Okay.
So I, that the board sign the town meeting warrant, execute, sign the town meeting warrant for the spring 2020 town meeting. Sorry.
So moved and seconded, I'll pull the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. Now we're going to ask for eight of seven, so we're a little bit behind. Mr. Gazinski and Carol Johnston are going to discuss Agenda Item 2115, which is a contingency budget called a 1/12 budget for fiscal year 21. For submission to the Department of Revenue, it would be helpful if you could explain what that is in concept in your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just give a brief overview of what this is, and then let the Finance Director discuss in detail what's before you. As, as part of the special act recently approved by the Legislature, an act to address challenges faced by municipalities from COVID-19, there is a provision that allows cities and allows towns to establish, through its chief executive board, a 1/12 budget, so that if for any reason the town meeting failed to establish a budget prior to July 1st, the town could continue to function. So as you know, the town meeting is scheduled for June 29th. We are very hopeful that we'll be able to conduct that meeting and to vote and approve upon a budget for FY21. However, in making sure that we have a backup plan should that fail to happen for any reason, the state has allowed this mechanism to be approved by the local select board. It does need to be then approved by the Department of Revenue. And there is a few week lag time between the town submittal and when the DOR would approve it, hence the reason to get this approved early and have it really as a backup just in case the town meeting was not able to set a budget for FY21. So the state, state requirements for this are pretty simple and pretty straightforward. They do, they, what they recommend is that town take its proposed FY21 budget and divide it out by, by 12 essentially for each month, and then add back in additional costs for any specific costs that, that might come in the early months of the year. In this case, there are certain costs involving our Norfolk County retirement and our different insurances that require some upfront payments in July. our different insurances that require some upfront payments in July. So, um, if you look at the budgets put forward, um, put together by the Finance Director, um, there are three months laid out in front of you, uh, for approval this evening, July, August, and September. Um, you'll see each month is a little different, and the reason for that is there are some upfront payments, um, in July which are necessary, and some in August which are more than your average monthly cost. So, um, uh, and the, the state, um, really just wants a simplified version of this with salaries, expenses, and certain other, um, uh, line items outlined in, in the submittal. So, um, with that, Madam Chair, I'd, I'd ask that we give the Finance Director a chance to talk about the numbers she's put together, and, um, then we can answer any questions that the board may have, uh, as to what we're, what we're doing here this evening.
Please.
So if you take the, uh, in the packet, you had an FY21 budget, Department, VOS adjusted, that's the general fund budget. Um, that is the 5% reduction budget that I used, uh, to come up with the 1/12 budget, that that has been the budget that was approved by the Board of Selectmen. Um, when you go down, so all of this ties to what you already have, um, been given in the full, um, expanded budget. The salaries for July, August, and September, 1/12 of the current salaries is $1,605,269. The expenses are $432,822 for July. There's an increase in August to pay for the, um, the buses, and that's $5,522,821. September would be $432,822. I'm submitting a, a three-month budget in the event that, um, we, the, um, the June 29th planned town meeting is postponed, and we're not able to take place. Not sure how quickly, uh, town meeting would happen, or if it could happen in July, so that's why I want to submit an August one. And not knowing how the summer grows and weather patterns, uh, we may end up, that we'll need to have the September one as well. So I want everybody to be prepared upfront, to know everything, submit these to the Department of Revenue, and then get their approval. Um, once we have a town meeting, of course, everything refers back to what the town voted, um, and then we no longer follow the, um, the 1/12 budget. Uh, Troy County is here for, uh, for July, the payment's $174,947. Uh, month of August and September, $87,473. Our general insurance, straight-lined at $35,162,000 for each month. Our benefits are front-loaded for the retirement, um, plan, and that's, uh, the July payment is $2,356,122, and the month of August and September are $408,539. Our debt payment, we don't have a debt payment in July. We do have a debt payment due in August and September. The September, the August payment is $950,706, and the September payment is $127,900. Um, total salaries and expenses for July is $4,000, it's $4,614,322. August is $3,619,970. And September, $2,707,165. The cherry sheet assessments for those months is $35,383 per month, bringing the total FY2021, uh, budget, 1/12 budget for July to be $4,649,705. August would be a total of $3,000, $3,655,353. And September would be $2,742,538. So that would be the general fund. We also have to submit for the enterprise fund. See, let's see attached there, you have, um, a sheet for each of the enterprises. Um, again, I, uh, worked with the Treasury to come up with, uh, what the large payments would be for, for any debt service that would apply to, um, these funds. And you'll see on the, on the water fund, the total budget is, um, $1,688,941. And a 1/12 budget for July would include a $10,200 debt service payment, and for the month of August, it would be $258,323 debt service payment. So for the month of July, the water enterprise bu, uh, 1/12 budget would be $75,256. August would be $323,378. And September would be $65,056. The next, um, 1/12 budget is the sewer enterprise.
Can I just ask one question, since it applies to all the enterprise funds? I noted that you don't, you don't show any, um, uh, time, as in dollars, for town council, and I'm just wondering, I know that, for example, we're going to have some stormwater hearings at some point. Uh, we may have, as a result, consultant time, um, for that, possibly legal services, and I'm also just thinking in general, uh, when we use outside vendors, uh, for specialty services that necessitate contracts, wouldn't we have some baseline numbers that would be applicable here in the town council line item across the board of the enterprise funds?
So the town council, um, amount comes in as part of the enterprise indirect cost. The legal, uh, that's one of the lines in the, as part of the indirects, is the legal fee. So there's a charge of 10% of the legal fee, there's about 45% to sewer, 25% to water, and stormwater has a 3.3% amount of legal fee. They're not shown here as an extra line item because they're part of the indirect cost. You'll see the transfer to the general fund, and that $213,000 that's on the screen right now, $739, part of that is, uh, legal.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So in the sewer, um, the total, uh, budget is, um, expenses are $1,420,245. In July, there is a Charles River Pollution Control District payment due of $117,207. That's paid on a quarterly basis. That's why you don't see it in the month of August and September. There's a debt service payment due in July of $66,300, and in August, a debt service payment of $133,588. Um, the salaries and expenses are straight-lined for, um, July, August, and September. The total 1/12 budget for July for the sewer enterprise is $216,078. August, $156,159. September, $32,572. Um, the last enterprise fund that we have is stormwater. That has a $600,000 total budget. Uh, the, uh, only thing in this that, um, we need for 1/12 budget of the salaries and expenses at this time, uh, the, straightlining them across with $14,638 for salaries per month, and expenses are $16,087 per month, bringing a total of a monthly, uh, 1/12 budget for July to $30,725, the same for August and the same for September. So these amounts, um, if approved, need to be, um, entered into Gateway. They just, uh, opened the, the document today for us to be able to enter these 1/12 budgets. Um, the budget vote needs to be, um, taken and, um, certified by the clerk of each board or council. So that would be, I believe, Mr. Jermaine. And then when I submit these into Gateway, um, after your vote, the town clerk needs to certify the amounts that are, uh, put into Gateway. And how they're entered into Gateway, they only list three categories, which are municipal expenses, school expenditures, and enterprise funds. They're just, uh, lumped together for the general fund, and then, uh, enterprise, the three enterprises will be lumped together that way. Like the total amount has to agree to what you sign this evening. And again, it would be, um, I'll be submitting it, the town clerk will be certified, that the vote, this was presented to you. These forms will be uploaded, the ones that you have before you, so that they will agree to what gets entered into the system at, um, Department of Revenue.
Is this munis at work, Carol?
This is, no, not, not, this is all Excel search sheet, and Gateway is, uh, Department of Revenue, uh, uh, website that you have to go to.
So we can't, so, so munis isn't available to us to do this? I'm just trying to see the economy of scale. I was hoping that this was going to be a munis triumph.
We do not, we do not budget through the munis system at this time.
Okay. Any of my colleagues have questions for Carol and her team? Thank you, Carol. Thank you, your team, for looking to the future on this.
You're welcome.
Yes, I have no questions. I think this is what we have to do to protect ourselves from a contingency point of view.
All right. I have no questions. I do have a comment that Carol has done an enormous amount of work over the last few weeks, putting this together, putting together the, whatever they call it, that latest fund from the, um...
The CARES Act?
Yeah, I can't remember what they call it, COGS, COGS, something, I can't remember. Um, but at any rate, it's a lot of work, a lot of late hours, and I think she's to be commended for the effort that's been put in to get all this done in a timely fashion.
Absolutely.
What do you need in terms of the actual motion language? Just to move as presented and have Pete sign? Is that what you need?
Yeah, I believe it's approve, um...
Yes. The votes need, only indicate that the board or council approves the plan being submitted. The clerk of each board or council must certify that a vote to approve the plan was properly taken.
Yeah, I would make a motion that the board approve the July, August, and September monthly expenditure estimate plans for the general fund, the water enterprise, the sewer enterprise, and the stormwater enterprise, as submitted by the Finance Director in the memo dated May 29th, 2020. Second.
So moved. I'll poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. Excellent. Another thing off the list.
I'm assuming that the, the clerk's certification is just, he's been certified. We don't need that, authorize him to do it. He just has to do it. Right?
Right.
Okay, Pete, good luck.
Thanks a lot.
We appreciate that. Uh, our next item, uh, that was a big one, so thank you very much, Carol. Uh, our next item, Agenda Item 2116, uh, covers, anticipates that on June 15th, the Select Board will be appointing, uh, uh, the membership, the core membership of committees, uh, to be appointed for the fiscal year. And so we are, again, reminding everybody that the talent volunteer form is on the town website, and every now and then, I find one of those really scintillating posts on social media where somebody has an idea and thinks that the people making decisions are not making the right ones. Well, this is your call to arms, folks. Please, 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 don't sit on the firing lines of the keyboard, but jump in and get involved, and then you will become informed. This is an opportunity, um, to, uh, bring, uh, actually to revive, uh, two, two committees that have been dormant of late but seem to be in need of, uh, a means of, am I, am I, is somebody yelling at me?
Uh-uh.
Oh, okay, I'm getting some backbeat. I apologize. Um, anyhow, these two committees seem to need to be revived. One of them is, uh, for sidewalks, which we've updated to include bike paths, because all the learning on this topic indicates the increasing shift in the open space, uh, subdivision, um, and public space configurations to, uh, have municipalities, uh, adopt some, uh, policy structure for bike paths. And then the second committee is a fields committee, and I think everybody has had some indoctrination to the need for that, uh, tonight. And, uh, Mr. McKay can speak to the need for both if he is available to do so. Mr. McKay, are you here?
I'm, I'm coming. So, of, of both of these issues, we've, in the past, we, we do, we, we have had a fields committing. Um, if you remember, way back, um, and we finally came to town meeting with their proposal of building the football field, and that was disbanded. The original fields committee, and I think I, uh, gave Karen the, uh, the backdrop and the charge that was made for the, uh, fields committee originally by the selectmen at that time, they were called selectmen back then, um, and it was quite extensive. And most of it, again, if we remember, that just, we just went through with the study, um, you know, the study also concurs, concurs with, um, what is in that fields, uh, study, that, you know, things need to be centralized, whether it be, uh, recreation, all the different fields, the, the high school fields, the town park fields, um, assistant, uh, assisting the oak grove commissioners with their, their, their care of their fields, uh, not taking over anything, but it would just be the, uh, the, you know, the upkeep of the fields. Um, and we came up with, during that fields committee study, we came up with, you know, ways that things could be done. Uh, myself, Mr. Baker, Sue Bauer, there was many people on, on, on that. There was, and I think you, I think you posted that, it was an eight or nine member board, and we had, uh, many goals at that time. The sidewalk committee, uh, that was created before I even came here and all that was, so on the planning board, when, uh, we encouraged a developer to put a sidewalk on one side of the road, it's better for impervious area, uh, because the town eventually is going to own it, especially if, if the town's going to take the, the land over. Uh, it's less maintenance for us. Uh, so what the developer does, he in turns, gives, turns the money back into the town that we can use in other areas, uh, whether we upkeep the road, uh, the sidewalks, or, or replace them. And that's what's been done with, I believe Carol supplied, uh, everyone with the list of what the costs were. I think since its inception, it was somewhere around $200,000, a little less than that, and I believe right to this day, there's, uh, approximately $50,000. Uh, the new development on Ridge Street, he is, uh, proposing, um, that he puts a sidewalk on one side, and he will donate the, the remaining funds for the other side into the sidewalk fund. I believe that's exactly what would be proposed on the, um, development off of Main Street. Um, and that could, I mean, with that amount, that could be a sizable amount of money, you know, in that, uh, in that fund. Uh, again, I could tell you briefly, I, I think that the only thing I remember that we ever replaced, we replaced sidewalks from, uh, the Rich Steels, which is to be Tedeschi's, and we did it all the way past the Legion, down to, uh, GAF, we replaced that sidewalk. We used funds, um, to replace the granite curving on Exchange Street, and the Select Board was the ones who appointed, you know, those funds. They, they allocated those funds. The committee, I don't think we ever met once in the time that, again, since I've been there. Uh, and I, and I think that we can, uh, I think it's a good thing to have. Uh, bike paths are a big thing. There's a lot of grants that we can get. If we choose to do, um, bike paths, if we decided to put one on 109, we could, uh, do a lot of work with, you know, handicap accessibility, where a lot of 109 doesn't, is not a handicap accessible, because it was built before the rules went in. And we could probably get it paved if, if we decided to make 109, uh, you know, joining, right now, Midway is, they have their bike path in there. Um, so again, I, I, I think both are a good, good idea. If we could get the volunteers to, uh, populate those, both committees, it would be good.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, um, is Bob Weiss still in our orbit?
Yes.
Um, because I thought it would be useful for this board to hear from him, uh, on the subject of sidewalks and bike paths as, uh, support economic development. Um, part of this was part of the, uh, open space, uh, planning report that was done for us by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Um, so if he's there and could just address, uh, I think the term is connectivity, because not everybody drives.
Karen, can you unmute Bob?
I'm trying. He don't have, he has to do it on his end, I think.
Yeah, it's on his end.
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Hey, Bob.
Okay. I, I just put it on my phone, so, uh...
I'm going to lower your end.
It doesn't go on the computer, so I just walked back and do it on my phone. Well, you mentioned the, one of the magic words, manager, connectivity. And when I first came to town, I remember the chair of the Board of Health came up to me as the energy, as the energy manager then, and taught, was talking to me about sidewalks and the need for folks in town to exercise. As the energy manager and the economic development and planning director, I can cite the phenomenon, as we're going on for about 10, 15, 20 years now, of retrofitting suburbia to make our neighborhoods more livable. And those connections are just what that's, what that's all about. So we could use sidewalks and bike paths to connect neighborhoods, one neighborhood to another neighborhood. We no longer see a lot of developers who are promoting gated communities because they're not communities. We can also, as mentioned, Jim had mentioned it before, we can leverage some state funding for things like complete sidewalks and other programs that will help us to build our sidewalks up and to use them. We were invited, just before we had the coronavirus kind of stop things on a government level, we were invited to join with Medfield and Dover and Needham and Boingham and Medway with the, to look at the Bay Colony rail trail. So that's another program that I've heard, that's very exciting to think about. So if this can revitalize a need for investments in sidewalks, I'd be more than happy to work with the committee. I would really recommend also that we revisit the master plan because the master plan, which is 20 years old, even back then it mentioned this. So I think there's a, it's a pretty exciting prospect, and I'm very grateful it's been brought up.
Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments about these committees?
Yeah, I think, I think these are important initiatives, and I think we should be taking a look at them. But frankly, I think this is the job for the next board of selectmen, or select board. I don't look to be taking on a bunch of new things over the next 30 days. This is, this is something for the next board to deal with. That's my view.
But we're appointing people to committees on the 15th.
That's correct. We're creating committees, that's my view. I think something for the next board to address.
Mr. Jermaine?
I have to concur that this is not the time to be creating new committees. Let the next board deal with it. We are, we've got enough on our plate right now, and let the select board deal with it now.
Okay. I'm on record as being disappointed because I see the need for both of them, and I think that there are people that were excited by the prospect of having a place to funnel their ideas. I don't think that the board, new or old, would really be doing heavy lifting here. I think you've seen from the work of the reopening committee that, you know, they've been fairly self-propelled and been very productive, so I don't think that would be harmful. So I hope that this is a front burner issue for the, for the incoming boards, since there's no support to pass it now. The next item on the agenda, so that's a pass, the next item on the agenda is to appoint two zoning board of appeals members, one an associate member and one a full member. Mr. Jermaine, do you want to take this agenda item?
Yes, I can do so. I have here the recommendation for appointment of Bonnie McDonald of 29 Booth Street, and also William Larson as a full zoning board member to be appointed to the zoning board. I have recommendations in place here with background, at least Bonnie. So I move that we appoint these two individuals, Bonnie McDonald and William Larson. I believe Bonnie would be appointed as an associate member and William Larson as a full zoning board member.
And just to add, I'm sorry, so Bonnie would be appointed as an associate member, you're only appointed for a year, so I don't know if you want to appoint her effective now through FY '21. William Larson would be stepping into somebody else's role, so his appointment would expire on 2023.
Okay. I'll accept that as part of the motion.
Second.
So moved and seconded to add to the talent of the zoning board of appeals, Ms., let's see, Bonnie McDonald and Mr. William Larson. I'll pull the board, Mr. McCaffrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes, yes. And with that, last item for consideration, I happen to note that I received a distribution of, I think it was Finance Committee Agenda, and I thought it was really effective for the fact that it just had a hyperlink to the package, which was on the website, and then what that did was that removed a lot of work for Karen, I think, to send us these big packages that sometimes, as a PDF, the files are too large, and so they require multiple submissions. And also, it also fulfills our transparency commitment to the community of making available the materials that we receive and our public record, just in the way that these other committees do. But it would just be a more efficient way of doing so, so I just wanted to put it on the table for the board. Anybody want to talk about it, not want to talk about it? I just wanted to recommend it. I saw it as functionally much more efficient than to get a big voluminous PDF, and a lot of times we get planning documents that have high density, high resolution files, maps, overheads, schematics, things that are color. And it just makes it very difficult to receive them, we're doing so much work online. And this way, when you are a participant but not a recipient of this package, you can literally follow along. If we're not using slides for the specific items, you can arrive as a member of the community, informed and educated, and feel really good about the fact that your government has been transparent with the information that's public record. But nobody's saying anything, so.
Well, I think it's an interesting idea. I personally love the packet, but, and I also think it's important that, you know, we are very transparent in what we're dealing with. I don't want that to be thought of as something that we're not doing. On the other hand, I think it's something that Karen needs to advise us on, since she's the one who is tasked with doing this on a regular basis. So I'm not going to make any recommendations, one way or another, without hearing from her first.
Karen?
Okay. Well, I would say this, as far as the workload, I guess it doesn't really change the work, except to Lauren's point, at times we have issues with the size of the file that I'm trying to email. I think it's more of a board decision as to when you want the public to get this information. I know it's public information, so the question is, we certainly can post it to the website, we could post it on a Monday morning. I think the timing is more of the question. My personal opinion is, I think the board should see the information first and be able to dissolve it before it goes completely public. I worry that sometimes some of the information, you know, the board's been following along so they understand where it's coming from, where it may not be understood right away by the public, and people might react to things that they don't even need to react to. On the other hand, it is all public in the end, so, you know, maybe I send it to the board on Fridays, but come Monday morning, I post the packet for anybody who wants to follow along, so the board has the weekend to think about it. It's entirely up to you guys as to what you prefer.
Well, again, as I said a little bit earlier, this is, you know, a process and a procedure that frankly is going to be in the laps of the new board, I think. To change things for one week or two weeks from now is probably not appropriate. Once the new board decides how it wants to get information and help disseminate the information.
I'm not going, go further at this point. We'll let it ride until a new board's in place.
Do I have a, Madam Chair?
Do I have a motion to adjourn? No, I'm sorry.
Please, Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, Kathy McInnes, 78 Island Road. I would like the board to get town council opinion from this because I'm under the impression that once Ms. Karen sends out the agenda, that it does become public information at that point. And I think it, the way it's now, it's not transparent. You're going over business and all of us are listening. And to the best of my knowledge, I don't have any ability to obtain the documents that you're looking at. Now, I could be wrong because I'm not familiar a lot about how to, the way the FinCom, she sends it, right? It's right there for us to go to. But I was wondering, Madam Chair, if, before the next new board convenes, if town council could review this and, in fact, make the agenda items transparent and put forward to the public when it is sent to the members of the board. Thank you for your consideration.
I think that would be a fair question to answer. Mr. Gazinski, if you could ask town council, we could just put it on the agenda for the 15th.
Sure, the board, yeah, if they would like, we could certainly ask the town council for his thoughts on the public nature of the contents and the requirements for dispersal from a legal perspective of the documents.
I think that makes sense because right now, we actually have, you know, the planning board does this too, and, you know, we just have different branches of government that are doing things differently, and we want the community to be really engaged from the earliest opportunity. So I think that that would be a reasonable thing to do, and then the new board can decide what they want to do with it, I guess. But then we see the conversation through, we don't wonder whether or not we're doing something wrong. You know, we get, that's why we have town council here. Anything we can do to be efficient, I think, is desired, and I see that it's 8:25, so we're a little bit later than I think we all hoped. I don't know if anybody else has anything else, other than to remind people that there is a talent forum on the website for committees, and we hope that a lot of people will participate. And getting an early ballot is as easy as sending an email to townclerk@milisma.gov. We want to congratulate again the class of 2020, and encourage people to partake in the rolling rally with safety concerns top of mind, but celebrating with safety can be done. And we hope everybody will give the class a rounding, a round of congratulations that they definitely deserve. And that really would include collegians, too. Certainly, this is the Milis High School that's being congratulated, but there's a lot of families in town that have college students that have had incomplete online or otherwise inauspicious graduation events as well, so a hearty congratulations to the class of 2020.
And just to add, Lauren, I know I had had the conversation before, but any student who is graduating in 2020, who has, lives in Milis, even if they go to a private school or somewhere else, is more than welcome to join the parade, if you're a Milis kid.
Excellent. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, Madam Chair, I will adjourn.
Pull the board, Mr. McCaffrey.
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Barnes? We'll see everybody back on June 15, and we will announce the time closer to then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.